Okay, shall we get started on this afternoon? We're on the home straight now. Thank you very much for everybody's participation so far. So my name once again is Ursula Edgington and I'll be facilitating the final six speakers we've got lined up for this afternoon. So quite a packed afternoon and yeah, exciting diverse range of speakers. So I think Asha, if you're there, our next speaker is going to be Dr. Jodi Bruning from the Soil and Health Association and she's the spokesperson for Soil and Health and the Organic Magazine, there she is. The Organic Magazine is a great resource of alternatives to glyphosate. Hi, Jodi.
Hi, how are you? I'm not a doctor, please.
Oh, you're not?
Researcher, writer.
Researcher, writer. Well, welcome to the People's Inquiry. We were very much looking forward to hearing from you. And I think Mariel's already got some questions lined up for you in advance. So be warned. So yeah. So Jodi is going to talk about failures of EPA glyphosate and bio solids. Is that right?
Yes, and I'm hoping to share my screen in order to, once I get started, I've got, I'm going to, I sort of whisking through a lot of stuff because I'm trying to bring a lot of stuff together. So I'm looking at it being a very visual sort of presentation yet. So I am very grateful for this opportunity. The commissioners are amazing and the organisers of the People's Inquiry, just enormous thanks. And I've been catching many of the submissions of the testimonies and it's incredible. Just the work that's been done in this space across Aotearoa is just fantastic. So thank you very much. Now, I have never shared my screen before, so I will attempt to do this.
Down the bottom of your screen, there should be an option to share your screen.
Excellent.
And so what I'll do is I'll just come on the screen and give you a little wave three minutes before the timer's up and then we can hand over to the commissioners to ask any questions.
Excellent.
That's it, that's good.
You can see it?
I can see that.
Right. How does that look? Excellent, good, thank you. Okay, so my journey down the rabbit hole of environmental chemical disruption started about 2009. So compared to some of you, I haven't been doing this that long. I purchased a bag of grass seeds and I wanted to understand why they were coloured, what was the treatment? I asked my brother-in-law, who's a farmer, did he get a name or a label on his grass seeds? And he said no. And we knew that there was a neonicotinoid insecticide treatment and the government told me that there was no requirement to label this because it was a coated, a seeded, treated product. And so therefore the active ingredient didn't need to be on the label. And as well as that, so we haven't seen in New Zealand the signs or signals showing that it's toxic to bees and pollinators. Now, even though this is a grass seed, we can tell that the that the, we know that in the mornings, you know, you see the moisture, the water on the grass and that's actually exuded from the grass and it contains this insecticide. So these farmers, they've got clover in their fields, they want pollinators in their field, but they've got this, they've got no choice when they buy a treated rye seed. They want the latest end-of-fight technology, but they don't necessarily want this treatment. So from there, I, a couple of years later, I had an opportunity to look at glyphosate. And I really wanted to understand because there was a fuss about glyphosate in the media. And why, what the original safety data had said. So I went and I looked at the original data that was sort of supplied over the late 90s, early 2000s to approve of the glyphosate, to get glyphosate basically on food and animal feed crops. And what I saw was that the data used, and this is a bit of a messy page, but was predominantly across the WHO, across the US EPA and across Europe. The data that gave those safe levels that said you can have an ADI, an acceptable daily intake of say one milligram per kilogram body weight a day was unpublished industry data. Sheminova, Monsanto and New Zealand and Australia, we tend to go, we tend to defer to the WHO, the World Health Organisation and the Food and Agricultural Association, their findings at what's called their joint FAO/WHO meetings. And so we today in New Zealand still defer to a 1993 Atkinson study to arrive at our acceptable daily intake. Now, look at this, it says body weight per day. We know children have considerably more, they consume more by body weight per day, but these decisions are all based on a 60 or 70 kilogram weight at all. And the WHO FAO decisions, as I say in the bottom right, are trade oriented and unaccountable to the public. Now, an increasing body of evidence was starting to accumulate and the International Agency for Research on Cancer in 2015 looked at this and they found that glyphosate in its formulations definitely caused cancer in laboratory animals and probably caused cancer in humans. In 2016, New Zealand reviewed the cancer studies, but they forgot to look at a lot of the data that the IARC looked at because the IARC really in its preamble, you can see, they look at published literature and they looked also at the formulation data. And the New Zealand EPA didn't look at this and this has been heavily criticised. But the IARC decision set in play the situation for US court cases. And we can now see that Monsanto has, sorry, who is now owned by Bayer, has now committed to some $15 billion in payout. Now, if you and I were looking at that, we would say that was new information. Stephen Browning and I put together a paper looking at the problems with the New Zealand EPA review and in line with what the IARC had found. And we spent a lot of time looking at the situation that led to the IARC finding. But we also paid a lot of attention to public and administrative law. And we wanted to communicate with the help of some colleagues the fact that there are obligations within the New Zealand EPA across our local government. We're talking about elected representatives and officials to consider. So they will consider the relevant issues that are important to the issue at hand. So if we look at food exposures on food, we want to know that a child can tolerate that. If we look at exposures on a food crop, we want to understand what the cumulative exposures, what their effects are and the potential for persistence or bioaccumulation. So the principles of law are very important here because we need to know that the government has done its job. And the Green, this was a Green Party document and the Green Party were quite anxious about this because it's quite political. So you can see there all the kind professors and experts that supported this document who we remain very grateful about their support today. 2018, so three years later, a group of three professors, an associate professor, wrote a paper in the New Zealand Medical Journal and you can see down there in yellow. They said they think that a reassessment should be conducted. Now, I'd like to clearly let you know that we've never had a reassessment of, sorry, a proper formal risk assessment of glyphosate that is publicly declared in New Zealand. If you do want risk assessment to happen, you need to apply under section 62 and you have to request that the authority then think about deciding whether there are grounds for reassessment. So the Dow's paper didn't formally request under section 62 and they didn't pay $1,000 for the committee to consider this request. Now, please be assured that the current committee at the NZ EPA that would consider this request have none of the epidemiological or cancer expertise of this group. And one of these groups includes an actual IARC scientist. So I think their authority is significant. I tried to get an op-ed in the paper but failed. This committee, this committee in the EPA, since the New Zealand, sorry, since the IARC finding, this committee have actually never met to discuss whether there is new information. So this is a new information from the IARC, it's from the US court cases, it's from recent court cases in Europe. Apparently, there is no new information unless this chief executive, who seems unwilling to request a risk assessment, or an individual pays the money. Now, we know Catherine Delaponty paid a submission fee for triclosan and then the New Zealand EPA promptly turned around and asked her to pay 50% of risk assessment. So I think there's a few barriers there to the public submitting. And now pollution is political. 62% of the volume of chemicals emitted into the environment are hazardous. We're seeing increasing work done by the UNEP, the Environment Programme, the European Commission, referring to pollution as a crisis. Anthropogenic, human-made synthetic chemical pollution is predicted to double by 2030. Now, the, apologies, chemical lobby groups, the consultancy agencies that work for them, their core goal is to delay regulation. New Zealand's Replacement RMA was recently, recently released a Natural and Built Environments parliamentary paper. They didn't mention pollution once, they mentioned greenhouse gas emissions but not pollution. The PSDR submission is worth looking at. But we know that childhood exposure is particularly worrying. We're looking at hormone level exposures, we're looking at multi-generational effects and the biggest issue may be for the neurodevelopmental and the neurological harm, which is looking at damaging the way we learn, damaging behaviour and intelligence. Now pesticides are a definite problem, they're a player that is huge in this game. You know, pesticide use increased by 80% between 1919 and 2017. The glyphosate market alone is $9.9 billion per annum. 64% of global agricultural land is at risk of pesticide pollution and herbicide sales are 45% of pesticide sales in New Zealand. Now, herbicide resistance in New Zealand is this huge problem. We see 12 glyphosate resistant species. And so what's happening is the newest marketing methods are definitely associating glyphosate. You put it in a tank mix and you mix it with other herbicides. The herbicides have different modes of action, they kill in different ways. The other way you do it is you have different rotations over the year. Now, the combinatory effect of this must be increasing pressure to ecosystems, but there is an utter absence of science to understand the increased risk, the cost ecosystem services, the implications for Maori and our drinking water. Now, the gaps in the drinking water and groundwater regulation are increasingly dire. And if we look at the marginal cost of conversion to mechanical or integrated technologies, this is completely unknown. Unfortunately, and I know I'm talking quickly, but the herbicides recommended for the rotations are often not tested in our environment or they're banned in Europe. So this is a massive problem that needs to be dealt with at a high level, not inside the NZ EPA. This should be an inter, a cross-agency issue that should be being looked at. And yes, farmers and applicators are at risk. If we were to just control household use of glyphosate, this would do basically nothing to stop the harm that we see in the environment. Amenity workers, the guys that are spraying in our public parks and public places, as well as farmers are at highest risk. And we know that regulators undervalue the extent of exposures. At the end of this PowerPoint and on my submission, there are the references that support this. Dermal use through spills and general use is common and we're looking at cumulative exposures over weeks, over months, over years. And the Roundup trials really shed light on this. We also know that children of farmers and applicators carry higher burdens. 385 million cases of pesticides poisoning annually. Most of this is not deliberate with 11,000 fatal. Where do you see the biggest contamination pathways? Through steering wheels, through mobile phones, through lunch when the gloves are taken off. Farmers and applicators do not want to poison themselves, but their work is very toxic. So New Zealand has an austerity problem, just like we hear about austerity finance in the European Union. We have an austerity problem for public good science. So we're not seeing environmental and human health monitoring or the scientific analysis that is required to understand how this works. So we don't see this as a feedback loop into the New Zealand EPA. So there, this cyclical, this cyclical, this is how modern science and stewardship and governance should work. Because the challenge of risk governance today, and I draw this from Ren, uncertainty, ambiguity and complexity. Where your two-year-old toddler interacts with a chemical, where a pregnant mother interacts with a chemical, where tuna, where inanga interact with a technology or a chemical, they all differ according to what the ecosystem is or the exosome is, the environment that they live in. So this is profoundly uncertain, this work, it is not linear. But instead, New Zealand's very exciting science industry is based on innovation. So we want to innovate for economic growth. And science that understands the drivers of pollution and disease is what's called uncomfortable knowledge. It can often threaten powerful interests. And so innovation knowledge isn't, doesn't tend to be political. It involves a new, as the OECD say, a new or significantly improved product, good process or service. So we don't see much public good. It's proportionally very, very small to the exciting innovation science that we're seeing being promoted from coming out of the Ministry for Business Innovation and Employment that controls 78% of science research in New Zealand. So when we look at, so if you look at the red dot, you can see the New Zealand EPA has, looks at new product authorisations, reauthorisations, risk assessment and looks at policy development. So we don't have our New Zealand scientists because we don't pay money, we don't allocate money for the science. So who comes to these processes? The chemical lobby groups, the grower industries, the international regulators and the close compatriots, the Australian regulator, the Australian industry groups and the chemical industry. When you have the general public, which is what we hear in the testimonials today coming to, they have a much quieter voice than industry power. They're seen as less authoritative. So you know, we see this happening at state level, at regional level, at local level. We've got the corridors of power, we've got the access for AgCarm and Fonterra, we've got the select committees and we've got the political funding. And I heard other testimonials where they talked about charities, subcontracting and the work of charities is highly problematic because you don't, you cannot run an official information act request through these guys. And so while much of their work is good and well intentioned, it doesn't carry the transparency. Now economist Mariana Matsukato has talked about this and how by subcontracting out, it basically dumbs down the machinery of government because they don't know what's happening. My own experience submitting to the Bay of Plenty Regional Council air policy, I wanted to connect the emissions into the air with emissions into environments. If you look at Navarro's work, you'll find that the horticulture environments emit possibly 10 times the chemical exposures, the pesticide exposures of other agri and arable crops. So after I made my submission citing a bunch of science and law, I was counter-submitted by Fonterra Balanced Agri Nutrients, New Zealand Agrochemical Trust, Mercury NZ, Port NZ, Federated Farmers, AgCarm, Port of Torong, Alota. They all came and counter-submitted. I did not have the capability, I did not have the resources to counter-submit on top of them. And that is how power works. Then again, we have the local submissions, we have people coming talking about glyphosate in streets and parks, the roadside, we have the NZTA, which of course is totally really democratically unaccountable. And we have the networked officials inside these organisations that receive the emails from AgCarm, that receive the latest financial deals and wills from the pesticide corporations. But unfortunately, I can't email them. So the general lay public lack the authority of industry, even if they cite the science, and they diverge from the authority source, the regulatory decisions because they're often citing published and peer-reviewed literature that are kept excluded from the regulatory data. And so the New Zealand data, because of this austerity economics, is inconsistent and weak. And most importantly, we lack an appeal mechanism when we are ignored and dismissed. So when the NZPA states that it is safe to spray, we are largely impotent. So coming back, this is a bit of a messy page, but the austerity science mean we don't have the monitoring and analysis, but that is supported by the national standards. The national standards don't include pesticides. So we were supported, PSDR and the Soil and Health Association were supported by a bunch of amazing public interest organisations when we wrote the public policy proposals on healthy waterways. We wanted to draw attention to the lack, the fact that synthetic chemicals have been kept outside consultation for nine years. So what this, and we know that GPs, they want to test, in many cases, they would love to test for synthetic chemicals, for heavy metals in blood, tissue and urine, but they can't. This is not funded through PathLab, this is not funded through the government. So the structures of governance prevent transparency in this area. So these, and these would be the evidential pathways that would be authoritative. And we, so we can't build up a body of evidence, but because of the austerity science, this is a crisis in universities and CRIs, Crown Research Institutes, because they are captured by the fact that there are very few long-term funding schemes that are politically safe for scientists to engage in. And often in the, throughout the universities and CRIs, there are conflicts of interest as private-public partnerships sway research away from controversial topics. Now, it's not just me saying that we've got a problem. You can see here that the parliamentary commissioner states that environmental research is fragmented and that we don't see that a single agency is responsible. So the work that the parliamentary commissioner has done is really, really important and I recommend you go to his website and have a look. So we have this problem that we have the public with the overspray, with the water contamination, with the mixture problems, with the metabolites that are never really looked at and assessed. Tell me when your local council, oh, I've got so much, oh goodness, Ursula, when your local council ever tested the soil, they haven't. There is no finance screening, appeal process. So I would like to suggest that the data proving safety, tikorakora, tikorohkaro is not, it's broken apart, it mud. And when we have, like for example, a new product authorisation coming through, we can see in the bottom corner here, only New Zealand had approved the heavy 600 grams per litre glyphosate content. So we have this absence of, New Zealand doesn't have a risk assessment, yet it approves a strong toxic compound. So we have what I call the Anglo-regulatory love pact. So they're looking at industry supplied data, they're looking at insensitive guidelines. Europe is outside the love pact because they have the precautionary principle at a high level in European legislation and they have more in-depth scientific analysis. They tie toxicity and groundwater more quickly, so they move more quickly to regulate. They have the precautionary principle, which is really important. And we, at a high level, and we have the precautionary principle at a very low level in our regulation. We recently had a risk assessment methodology for hazardous substances, a policy processes that was put together. You can see here, the industry groups, you can see the public, many of which have submitted to this process today. But you don't see the scientists. This is a 120-page paper, they don't mention precaution once. So this methodology left out the issues of contention, which is in a separate document. They didn't line up toxicity to the real world, they relied on modelling scenarios and they don't look at feedback from New Zealand ecosystem science or health science. So now, we have a bunch of substances banned in Europe that are in our fresh water, in our food and in our soil. You can see the green picture, our pictures of glyphosate and carcinogenic compounds in our cereal. Much of our wheat is imported from Australia. Drinking water levels are particularly problematic because we follow the WHO drinking water guidelines. So if you look at the orange, European Union is much more stringent, ours is much weaker, we follow the WHO. And then we also do not look at the class-based issues. So you can see metabolites are spaced out. So rather than looking at some totals like the European Union do, we don't. Now, I have gotten a little bit more, but I will stop here in order to.
Thank you, Jodi, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's okay.
It's a really fantastic presentation and if only we have more time. You know, I think if nothing else, this hearing has shown that, you know, we could talk for a whole week on these subjects and really get in, you know, in amongst it. So I know that Mariel's very keen to ask you specific questions and of course, after the hearing, you know, we can always follow up on some of these particular references again individually, so don't worry about that. So I'll leave the commissioners to ask questions.
Thank you very much and thanks, Jodi, that was excellent, as is your submission. But as Ursula said, it's given rise to a number of questions for me. In fact, I've got five and I know we haven't got a lot of time. So can we try and do these as quickly as we possibly can? You mentioned in your submission that you saw positive changes coming out of the proposed updated, there has no bill. Can you quickly tell me what they are?
Well, it's a very small positive change. It's the fact that we will, we could defer to a foreign, and possibly you've talked about this before, another, oh gosh, you know, another regulatory. No, but the problem of course is I really emphasised that Anglo-regulatory love pact. And so it's important to stay up to date on that, to look at the European decision-making and how the Europeans are making decisions.
Okay, so that brings me nicely on to my next question. And that is, why do you support an improved risk assessment rather than a hazard-based system that the European Union uses?
Possibly I've made a technical error there, so I, yes. Hazard-based, if you're looking at carcinogenicity, if you're looking at endocrine disruption, we do not know where harm starts and stops. But that's why hazard-based is so important and you've clarified that really nicely. There is no, when you look at, for example, oxidative stress, which can set in place the mechanisms for many diseases, you don't know where oxidative stress starts. And that's why the hazardous assessment is really, really critical and that interplays really importantly with the precautionary principle.
Thank you, I had a feeling you might think like that. Next one is probably a pretty self-evident answer, but I haven't heard you say it or I haven't seen it in your paper. But what do you think of the risk benefit approach that our legislation takes to pesticides?
Look, I have had four more slides and they were talking about benefit because actually this, when I was starting to talk about the methodology, the methodology is shocking because there's no potential, in that methodology, there was no potential to critique the cost benefit. If you go, if you go and look at the glyphosate, 600 grams per litre. 600 gram per litre applications and decision documents in the NZEPA. If you search for the Superior Paraquat cost benefit analysis provided to the Paraquat 2019, you will, it's just, it's actually quite horrifying and it's, it's utterly insulting to Maori. There are no, you know, this, the NZEPA reiterates that they're looking at Maori and they're looking, there, there's nothing. They, they haven't, the cost benefit analysis, I have never seen a single ecosystem services cost benefit analysis to understand, for example, the cumulative impact of herbicide, fungicide, insecticide exposures. And, and that, that the extraction of quality in groundwater, for example, and the potential for that to impact drinking water. Now, what's really important is when we look at stats NZ and how we value freshwater or water in this, in this country, it's only valued by stocks and flows. It's not valued by pollution.
Right. Okay. I would have to say also, when I made a submission to the first reassessment of chlorofluor some years ago, it was clear what the science was. It's clear then, now, then as it is now, but the response from the EPA was, well, the farmers have said they need it. So they have to have it. But anyway, we won't go down that rabbit hole any further. You talked about the establishment of the environmental exposure limits under has no act. Actually, in a little bit of history, this was in response to the proposed agricultural chemical trespass bill, which may drift beyond the boundary illegal. That bill created an uproar because sprayers and their friends said they can't spray if they can't drift beyond the boundary. It's not possible. So they had to be allowed to drift. So the EELs was an attempt to establish the allowable level of drift. And as you noted, they've never been established because they actually couldn't work it out.
Yeah. So in this, so this functional process in the has no has been disappeared because we don't have the science. We have science security.
Well, actually, there is no science in which you can establish an acceptable exposure level. It's not going to harm something. So I just wondered what you think of the AGKIM trespass bill approach of, of making drift illegal?
You know, we, we should actually, because yes, it's, it is, it's, it's this pile of cards. So we, you know, when we start looking at endocrine disruption and we start looking at risk to the households and the families that live next to a crop. I mean, you know, I live, you know, the Bay of Plenty, we've had a fumigant come across the road from the strawberry farm and basically, you know, wipe out our family. You can't, you know, preventing these, the, the border and the trespasses is, is, is so difficult and all but impossible. And so what I got to at the end of my presentation was actually looking at macroeconomics. Because we, we seem to have a reserve bank that can help finance COVID and can help finance 1080. But we, we have the power in our government to, to finance the data and the science that helps us transition away from industrial chemical dependency. And it's really important. I want to emphasise that we support farmers in this process because farmers have been totally let down by this system. And, and because of the dominance of industry, farmers then, you know, they, they, they've got tight, they've got tight costs. They're, they're selling commodity product. They've got supermarkets that control the prices. So we need to, we need to look at how we support farmers to shift. And we most definitely can because we can see that's starting to happen in Europe.
Okay. Thank you. Just one last thing. You talked about Paraquat. Paraquat is banned in the country of origin, it's country of origins for health reasons. And that's the Europe, that's the UK principally now, but also the European Union. But it's still imported into New Zealand. Fortunately for us, the European Union is looking at banning export of pesticides that they have banned themselves. So far, only one country in the world that I'm aware of, and that's Palestine, prohibits the imports of pesticides that have been banned in their country of origin. What do you think New Zealand should do in this area?
Well, I think, I think that's an, that would be an excellent policy mechanism to follow. And I think, I think Damien O'Connor, you know, he's been to Europe, he's, he's, he's looking at trade agreements with Europe. How good would it be if we were harmonising with European decisions? If, and, and if we were looking at that, that, that such a policy as you're mentioning there. Because I, I sort of saw, you know, O'Connor went to the UK to talk about trade agreements. And of course, the, the UK have excised off from, out of the European Union now. And, and the European Union market is massive in comparison. So it just, it makes sense if we start looking at these really intelligent mechanisms. But supporting farms, looking at the new mechanical technology, having the government import mechanical tech, help subcontractors and contractors and governments set up to, to set these, you know, new, and, and looking at the integrated weed management, you know, Charles Merfield's done a lot of work there too.
Thank you very much. I won't take any more time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. I'm aware that we were going to take five minutes break before Hugh and I think Hugh is ready, Dr Hugh Jelly is ready to speak. But if anybody wants to ask a final question of Jodie before we just take a quick breather. The other commissioners, have you got questions for Jodie?
Maybe I'll just say that, yeah, I, I like the way Jodie brings everything together with the big picture, joining the dots. Would love to see the copy of the PowerPoint. And I'm sure, like in our spreadsheet, now this is just a technical thing. In our spreadsheet, when I clicked on the substantive PDF document, it said it couldn't be found or had been deleted or something. So I need, we obviously need to follow that up to get that detail. But if, I'm definitely very interested in having that follow up. So, so I won't take the time now.
It should be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no.
And I just want to, to mahi te Jodie and thank you so much for your testimony. This is incredibly excellent. And it's something that I'm going to have to think through because it was a lot of information there. But thank you so, so very much. Na mahi kia koe.
Thank you. And, and the opportunity there is hopefully, you know, when this is publicly online is that people can pause and they can look at the data and they can type back. And the references are, most of the references are at the end of the document of the PDF as well. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Jodie Bruning. That's, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. So we're just going to take a little bit of a few minutes breather now before we move on to the next speaker, which is actually really timely because Jodie was just mentioning about the farmers, the support for the farmers in that transition process. And, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the thing coming out over the next couple of speakers. So Dr Hugh Jelly is from the Taupo area. And again, the theme of glyphosate connected to ecological health is the subject of his presentation, his testimony. So feel free to turn your cameras off if you want to have a, a quick stretch for a couple of minutes before we get started. Welcome, Dr Hugh Jelly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Yeah. And you, can you hear me all right?
Yes, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. Are you planning to share your screen?
I was wanting to share my screen. Yes, please.
That's fantastic. Okay. So we'll, we'll allow that to happen with our magical technological screen. Thank you very much for joining us. So we're on the final day, the final afternoon of the People's Inquiry. And this is Dr Hugh Jelly, who is going to talk to us about glyphosate and ecological health. And I'll hand over to you, Hugh, and I'll just come in and give you a quick wave a few minutes before, as usual, we hand over to the commissioners for questions and answers, if that's okay.
No, that's fine. Thank, thank you very much. And, and it's been a big couple of days for you all. And, and thanks for the opportunity to present. And also thanks to People's Inquiry for putting this on. It's, it's, it's been a great effort. Just, so I'll just start sharing my screen if I can. These things always never quite goes as planned. That's great. Thank you. And just, yeah, so what I'm intending to do today is to talk about glyphosate and the harm that it creates ecologically. And but, and, and it's, it's, it's probably in the time, we can't do it a whole lot of justice. So I'll be touching it at a fairly high level. But in my view, glyphosate will prove to be one of the most toxic chemicals that man's ever made. And I guess I'm going to touch on some of those kind of issues and why I think that. By way of a little bit of background, I'm Hugh Jelly. I'm a veterinarian, especially as a rumen, ruminate nutrition and teriogenology. I've, I've worked around the world in, been lucky enough to sort of touch on industries and mostly in dairying and agriculture. And I guess I've been concerned at the impact that agriculture has been having on ecological health and also on society. And so we set out a regenerative up as, as really a way of helping move the change towards farming systems, which, which can bring health back into both ecological health and societal health. So I work with farms and organisations to help them understand how they can bring regenerative design into their businesses and look to bring health back into those systems. I work closely with the Savery Hub globally. We, we have the Savery Hub in New Zealand and I'm certified field professional for them. And we do a lot of, a lot of training and with their systems. And just by way of acknowledgement, a big, my interest in glyphosate particularly was really sparked when Don Hugger and Giles Eric Serelini came to New Zealand. And really started to talk to me a little bit about what, what was going on. Stephanie Semenoff has done some really good work in the early stages about putting, trying to link together some of the things that she was seeing and, and why that might occur. And in more recent times, we followed the work of Zach Bush and have still communicated with these people. And also coupled with, with my own work and the understanding that I've, I've developed in that, in that area. And just by way of a brief history, which I think we're probably all familiar with, but, but glyphosate was first formulated back in the 50s. It was, it was, it was a key, it's a key later. It basically simply, simply ties up cadirons. And it was used originally to clean pipes, particularly calcium deposits from pipes. And was patented in 1964 by Stealth Chemicals as, as a product for that, for that purpose. Pretty ambitious beginning for, for a product that's, for something that's ended up so big. And then a few years later, it was discovered by Monsanto that it, because it was, because it was a key later, it had herbicidal activities. Most herbicides work through the chelation properties. And it was patented by Monsanto. It was a herbicide in 74. And it was also later discovered that it had antimicrobial properties. It was, it was recognised that it was actually an antibiotic. And was patented as an antibiotic around about 2010. Came off patent in 2000 and there was a rapid explosion of Me Too products globally. And, and we, we've seen a massive explosion in the uptake and the use of glyphosate in multiple forms, multiple reasons around the world from probably around the nineties through to now into recent times. Certainly the most widely used globally. And by many times the most widely used antibiotic globally. And I think one of the things we don't realise that it, it does have wide use in New Zealand. And part of the problem that we have in New Zealand is we don't really, particularly in areas of municipal weed controls, parks and roads, et cetera. We don't really have a good record of how much we use. And we would estimate that probably around 20% of, certainly in the white cattle gets sprayed out every year. If you, if you think about that in terms of the maize crops and some of the other cropping activities that go on, the use that it has in, in areas like horticulture, orcharding. And, you know, the concern in the white cattle particularly is all of that water's going, a lot of, yeah, that water's actually tapped for drinking water in, in Auckland. So again, a fairly, a fairly simple compound. But just thinking a little bit about the way that it works, because understanding how it works gives us some kind of feel for why, why it creates the harm that it does. And as a key later, again, it seems to be relatively simple. We understand how that works. But in, with regard to glyphosate, one of the big differences is it's water soluble. So when it gets into your system, when it gets into the environment, we really don't have an ability to control it or, or get it out again, if you like. So it stays in the environment for a long period of time. Its main action is, is through, in, in plant and plant biology by affecting the shikimate pathway and compromising the formality production of amino acids. And, you know, as we know, amino acids are critical in, in creating proteins and the building of life and the building of bodies. And specifically, there's, you have the nine amino acids that are actually the only ones that, that mammals and animals can get, need to get, need to get from plants. So when glyphosate was actually formulated, it was identified and, and licensed, if you like, on the basis that it didn't, didn't have an impact on mammals or people specifically. Because we didn't have a shikimate pathway. But that was, there was obviously conveniently forgotten that actually 80% of our DNA virtually is actually plant based or bacterial based. So clearly, and then anything that impacts on the ability of plants to create the amino acids that we, we need is going to have an effect on human health. There's also multiple direct impacts that glyphosate has at different levels of life, if you like, from the point, from soils through to plants, through to animal. It's a biocide. So effectively all life is affected by, you know, the ubiquitous nature of glyphosate at very low levels. And we see there's the direct impact it has on bacterial life in the soil. Implications that that can have around soil health, the ability of soils, the ability to produce food at all levels, the impact that it has on, on animals directly, the impact it has on people. We see that in insects showing up and bees and the ability for bees to compromising their navigation, compromising their digestion. So we're seeing this showing up in, in multiple places and multiple forms. If we look at our food, for example, we, we, if we analyse our food now from a nutritional compound aspect back to where it was back in, back in the 40s and in recent times, we see massive declines in nutritional content, mineral content of our food, both of meat and, and vegetables. A lot of that can be attributed to, we believe, to glyphosate. I know from my own experience, when I was early, when I was practising as veterinarian, looking at situations in New Zealand, we, we never had to think much about manganese deficiency. Yet manganese deficiency in New Zealand is now something we need to consider. And, and my, my hypothesis on that is it's largely due to the uptake of Roundup. We see, we see a direct, again, a direct impact on soils, changes the nature of the bacteria in the soils. And we see a selection against beneficials more towards pathogenic bacteria. So we start, oh, pathogenic organisms. So we start to see. And I think the relevance for that for me is, is in the area of, you know, carried back, for example, which is based on Phytothera. And we see around the world that Phytothera is actually starting to become more prevalent as a disease state. Whereas we go back pre glyphosate days, it was always there, but it was, it never really caused the same degree of problems. If we think about this in, in terms of climate change impact, we know we have to have good effective ecosystems functions. We're looking at things like water cycle and mineral cycle specifically. They depend on having a, a, a good microbiome and soil, which is helping with that whole the whole complexity of what's going on in that soil. If we start to compromise that microbiome, if we start to change the balance and get rid of some of those beneficial bacterias, we start to see that showing up and the change in our water cycle. We see, and that's, that's going to change the whole hydrology, potential to change the hydrology of the atmosphere. And we see that showing up in, in increasingly in what, water vapour is one of the major greenhouse gases. And if we start to compromise the way that hydrology works, we're starting to see that's changed significantly in, in climate change. we started to see that's changed significantly in in climate change. Similarly, in the if we think about this in terms of the food web, you we see that fungi, bacteria are a critical part of that food web. And as we change the way that that the way that balance works, we will see that starting to show up in our food and come back to that earlier slide in terms of the way that what we've actually seen happen to our food. We also we'll also see that to start to show up in the anthropods, some and other parts of that food web. In the mineral cycle, again, the impact that has on the insect life, the impact that has on the bacterial life is affecting the way that mineral cycling works, that affects the quality of our soil and the abilities of our soils to bring back carbon and water in the soil. And again, the impacts that that can have significantly on on health at all levels and also climate change. We we know that there's a direct impact that some of this work goes back over a long period of time, that there's a direct toxicity impact of glyphosate on on health, on human health specifically. And we also know from this and and some of the work that Don's done in early times and and just bringing this together. But if we start to bring, we start to look at the relationship between the use of glyphosate and some of the things that we're seeing changing fertility is is certainly a big issue. We, you know, I think recent work out of the US is telling us that, um, you know, one in one of three males and one of four females are now having to have help with with fertility issues, we're seeing we see increasing birth defects in animals. Again, this, a lot of this is consistent with other work that's been happening. And we see an increasing an increasing incidence and and a lot of chronic diseases. In fact, if we if we look at that in another form, if we if we start to put that together in a timeframe and look at some of these chronic diseases over time, we find that with, you know, between 70s and the 90s, we've seen a massive, almost an epidemic of of multiple kinds of chronic diseases at the same time. So we start to look at that and 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 think, well, we're looking at what what's been changing, what's changed in the world? That's actually bored about some of these, some of this epidemic, yes? Time?
Just two, just two minutes before we stop the questions here.
Yeah, so so what what is it that's bored about some of these? What's a common factor? And we come back to the fact that this is this is largely the use of the uptake of glyphosate. And again, we can go through the same thing in terms of, you know, autism's a really big case in point. One of the things that we haven't been able to do is actually understand why, what is it glyphosate does? And 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 we know that it's actually obviously affecting the microbiome and the human gut. We know that it's affecting, we now know that it's affecting directly the epithelial lining or the gap lining of that of of our major protective system that runs from nose to 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 tail, basically. Uh, and and it's it's directly impacting on that gut lining. The all of and in fact, all of the linings, when we look at the epithelial lining, we look at the blood brain barrier, they're all being impacted directly by glyphosate. But in recent times, we've all, and this is work that Zach Bush has been doing. We also know now that there are, in addition to those tight junctions that we get in the epithelial lining, we're also finding that actually there's another level of connection, which is really a fiber optic connection. It's actually a light connection, which is also broken down and damaged by glyphosate. And we get out of that, we get isolation of a cell. So when and we know the nature that if we start to disconnect things from each other, we actually start to take away the ability or or health or what that and and when they become isolated, effectively those cells, when they're disconnected, they lose, they lose the ability to to heal the connections that they need to actually get better and they lose and apoptosis is actually interfered with. So that's all they can do is multiply. So when we see that happening, we're now starting to explain that this isolation is actually part of what's causing cancer. So I guess partly trying to bring all of those things together is and leads and leads us to the outcomes that we're getting and a lot of the explanation of what we see in human health. So it's it's probably a good place to stop. And open up to.
Much, Hugh, yeah, that was that was excellent presentation. Thank you very much for that overview, which is really valuable for for, you know, many people who aren't familiar with the the history and the, you know, the complexities of how the glyphosate thing has become such a big issue globally, isn't it now? So it links very well with what Jodie was saying earlier. Can I hand over to the commissioners who who wants to kick off the questions?
I'll make a start and just to thank you so very much, Hugh, for your presentation, for your testimony. And I I'm, I guess I'm wanting to, what is the what other benefits besides power and money? I guess are these, you know, Monsanto's and these buyers, you know, what what the heck is going on there? They do they think that people you know, ignorant enough to to allow them to keep doing what they're doing? Or how have they gotten to all the universities and the academia and governments and? Yeah, that's a big question, isn't it?
Yeah, I think I think there's there's multiple, it's a really complex question and there's probably multiple answers to that. I think, yeah, but where where I get really concerned and when I look at at our own situation in New Zealand, I guess we and and I think this is reflects a little bit around the world, is that we're more inclined to want to ignore a whole lot of the science that's being done and it's now increasingly becoming relevant. I I I don't think there can be any sound argument anymore that actually there isn't the science to support the fact that glyphosate in its various forms is damaging to all levels of the ecology and 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 society. But we seem to be more inclined to want to find ways to ignore that and and protect the current status quo than in fact actually look at how we can actually change or modify our uses of it. I and from my own point of view, I see there's there's no expl- you know, we there's a continued argument, I know strongly in New Zealand and Australia, that we cannot farm without glyphosate. And I think that's part part of what's happened and and you know, this technology farming, the heart, you know, more accurate farming of of, you know, just finding ways to excuse the use of it. And I I I just don't think there is any. And and I think from a New Zealand's perspective, you know, I think our future lies in in being able to identify and tell the story about how we're actually regenerating health in our system, rather than this continued use of an industrialized model. So I get really, I get really concerned about where we're at with that. And that's it to your question, I I think, you know, the simple thing is power and money. I mean, effectively, they have bought their way into into those rooms, they have advertised, you know, their advertising's been very powerful. The ability for them to sit up and say, look, there's no, this doesn't, this product doesn't last in the environment. And yet, you know, on the one hand, they're claiming that's still killing weeds on your drive and for three months. And then on the other hand, it's got no residual activity. So I just, I just think they've been very clever in terms of their marketing, how they've got into this, into this space.
Thanks, thanks, Hugh.
Okay, um, thanks, thanks for that. Um, I am, you might have heard from my other questions, very interested in those wider systemic effects. Like on soil invertebrates, I like your, the slide you had, all the 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 trophic, all the seven different, five different stages. I can't remember exactly what they were. But we always, uh, from whether it's an EPA decision-making process, but a general regulatory process, uh, it's like prove it. Um, and especially in New Ze- I know we also have that cost benefit. Uh, as has been mentioned, the main benefit is the farmers say they need it. But have there been, so all that evidence about soil and ecosystemic effects? That I take it that's overseas research, we're not doing that here, are we? Right?
We seem to be good at ignoring overseas research and saying we have to replicate it in New Zealand because we're different and
I know. How's the soil and the, yeah, the ecosystem, the ecosystemic approach different? Um, yeah, and but so so I I agree. And then a comment on, just a comment on the farming, um, which I mean, you probably, you probably know this yourself, but one thing I've just come across and something else I'm involved in is this, is that what you call chicken and egg with the farming? So they've got a large, now you can make more money if you get two milking's a day, which then you need to do that, you need to grow more grass, which means you need, and especially if you get pivot irrigators to grow more grass, but then you need a big loan to get the pivot irrigators, so you go around in a circle. But to get the cows eating enough grass to do two milking's a day, you've got to kill every single non-grass weed that they might not want to eat. You can't just let them avoid it because it's not efficient enough, right, to get the number of cows you need. And farmers are routinely in some areas just completely spraying whole pastures, even with grass, with Roundup, get rid of it, re-sow it with just grass, right, just to get rid of the weeds they don't want. Uh, and just in order to keep that cycle going, and I've I've noticed this of evidence and some other thing that I'm involved in. And I just thought it's like, it's very hard for someone to stop that cycle. And like you say, unless you, and there are, I know there are plenty of examples of people who have stopped to say, actually, you can have just as much profit by, without all those inputs and having a number of cows and only have one in a day. But I just thought, there's that kind of drive for the money cycle as well, which seems to be behind a lot of it. Um, but if they had effect, now if people were responsible for their side effects, if we hadn't externalized the costs, if we had evidence about the damage that was being done, whether it's pesticides in waterways or down into aquifers, if we had better testing, we might find more evidence of reasons not to do it. But at the moment, we don't seem to have that.
But could I comment on a couple of those points? I mean, I think I mean, with respect to a lot of people who are involved in this, and we we tend not to want to look at that. I think that evidence does exist. I know just is in the Matamata Hospital, for example, they've got evidence that shows that the incidence of cancer within certain areas and where more glyphosate is being used is there is, there is a correlation. We know, you know, I mean, glyphosate is an antibiotic, I mean, we know it kills, we know it kills bacteria. So if you're going to spread on the ground, you're going to kill bacterial life on the ground. So we know that compromises the soil biology and and then ultimately. So part of the problem is at the moment is that we're trying to, we're looking at all of these things in silos. We're not, we're not looking at, we're not looking at that whole picture. So and again, as we know, if you've got a machine that depends, you know, machines depend on inputs and and the energy intensive or input intensive. So our farming system currently is input intensive as you identify just to sustain it. And it's with, you know, it's just this continued spiral to the bottom, if you like, because we just become more and more dependent on those inputs like glyphosate and and ureas. Whereas we know that if we take those out, all of the things that we need in life are actually in our soil. If only we'll give them the chance to regenerate and that's but at the moment, we've got a whole lot of different siloed views that are telling us this doesn't work or that doesn't work. But actually, we know in living systems, they have the ability to self-maintain, self-regenerate. So so it is, it is a mindset change as you identify.
I'll leave it to Muriel.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, Hugh, it was very interesting. And I really appreciate you bringing up the Phytophthora and the Kali Dyeback and the loop with glyphosate. I've I've had a brick wall with that one in this country. I've been told by by Forrest and Bird that MPI have done the studies to prove that glyphosate doesn't cause an increase in growth in Phytophthora, which is kind of contrary to everything else that's happened around the world. Um, just one quick question, um, you talked about the birth defects in animal farm animals overseas. And I'm aware of that, I've read papers and seen gusty photographs. Just wondering if you've seen any examples in New Zealand that you think you could is tied to glyphosate and feed?
Yeah, look, I believe I have, but it's anecdotal and I guess that's part of the problem is that because of, yeah, we kill our animals so quickly, it's sometimes difficult to actually find that you've you've got trends or that these things are actually happening and until you get, until some time goes by. So, um, yeah, difficult to answer.
I thought you'd say that, okay, thanks very much.
Just just one last question, this, um, he was, I wonder how the 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 effects of Agent Orange has Orange has had on on people, on the on 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 generations of people from that time. Um, I only say that because my my daughter-in-law's are from Vietnam. And we've got a, you know, baby that's got special needs from that. And on all accounts, healthy, healthy environment. But I wonder whether that's come from, you know, genetically from her parents and exposure to Agent Orange, I'm just just putting that out.
Look, look, Emma, it's a, it's a great point. And then again, it's not something we've had time to go into, but there's certainly general, I mean, so what and it's again, something that Don has got into a bit and Zach Bush is getting into more and more, is we're seeing genetic change. So you, I mean, if you think about, we we don't have a big gene makeup, but actually each one of our genes basically impacts about, you know, 200 proteins. So 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 when you start to make the changes or see, and and we see that that glyphosate has the ability to make it to to impact. And as we get more and more understanding around genetics, we're starting to see these things show up and understand them better. So there's certainly the possibility, you know, I think there is evidence now that we're seeing generational change from the use of glyphosate. And I think, you know, Terranaki, there's evidence that people who are actually working in the factory have have actually also shown that there is generational impacts of of some of the conditions that they've got. So, yeah, I mean, I just this, we we look, we seem to find it looks worse.
I think so. I have to, thank you, yeah, sorry, we'll have to call it a day there. Uh, thank you ever so much, Hugh, for that testimony and for your submission, that's been really helpful. And we are going to take a 10-minute break now to just gather our thoughts. Um, so please, um, go and have a stretch and a breather and get away from the the Zoom overload, but thank you very much, Hugh. And, um, yeah, I've, we've had some really positive comments on on our Facebook page, et cetera, about the the input in particular about, um, you know, the the farming impact and the glyphosate issue generally. So thank you very much, let's have a break.
No, thank you all and over this, okay.
Okay, welcome back after that quick break uh, to, um, the last part of our people's inquiry. And I just want to share with you a couple of these comments that we've had on our various posts on social media. Uh, this one says, wow, this has blown my mind. We are so appreciative of the people's inquiry for organizing this wonderful event and for the commissioners for their engagement. And this one says, this is the most powerful and compelling thing that I've seen since arriving in New Zealand. I urge others to take the time to listen to these voices from the margins, shining light into a culture of ignorance on the socio-ecological effects of these chemicals. So we are being appreciated and we definitely appreciate everybody's engagement with our, we just wish that we had more time and and more people power to, uh, you know, to do more, but we're doing the best we can. So it's great that we've got that that interaction and and the attendees to this event. I know that it's been a long event and people have popped in and out when they can. So it's great to have you here whenever, whenever you can be here. And just to reconfirm that we are recording these sessions, all three days, full days have been recorded. Um, and when we get an opportunity, we will be editing the highlights and publishing them on our website and on the various social media platforms. And so to, um, get going to the next speaker then, hopefully Ash is there and she can um, swap over our speakers, because I know that we've got Max Pernell, um, who, as we were just talking about the farmers, um, it's very timely, um, that we can talk about the farmer's perspective. And the observations of a citizen farmer, I know it's been in the news as well recently. I can see you're there in the room, Max. Welcome, if you'd like to turn on your video and your microphone, I'll hand over to you. There you are.
There we go, yeah.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, great to have you here with us. Um, so I'll hand over to you now, Max, and then I'll just pop on and and wave my Um so I'll hand over to you now, Max, and then I'll just pop on and and wave my hand when we've got a couple of minutes before your time's up. And then we can hand over. To the commissioners for their questions. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Thanks.
Look, you're all um. Hey, hey, look, it's been a really interesting three days because I'm still actively farming. I didn't get all of it, but. I was going backwards and forwards and I do have a notebook full of notes to to help us with the forward direction from here because I'm. I'd just like to start this after listening to, listening to it is is that like an old mate that once said that you can't. You don't know you're in a revolution when they're happening. And I'm of the view that what I'm seeing internationally with my mates around around the globe and whatnot on this particular issue and. And then in 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 the whole interconnectedness of life. Um we're we're on a roll that I haven't seen in the last twenty years of my little piece of involvement. So. Go do your good things, be optimistic and get into it. Um so yes, I think it's thanks, you know, it's it's obvious, isn't it, that this is a pretty neat, neat event? Look, um I I made us, I'm not an academic, uh so, but I have made a set of little notes that I wanted to. I wanted to join you to add to the growing. Understanding and respect that's happening without doubt for the interconnectedness of all of the biological world. That's what's in front of us, the indigenous people all around the globe now are getting that respect. Because the sciences, as we know them, are are unfolding fast. And um I would argue that the single best part of the case. For a complete review of the way in which we deal with these pesticides, herbicides, and indeed the way in which we put our inputs into our food supply systems. It comes comes by way of, we own, we didn't know about the biome, gut biome, just a, even just a little while ago. I I was involved in the sciences, just um giving away money into them. For the Agmar back a bit and and it was just never mentioned. And it wasn't until we unscrambled the DNA and then of ourselves. Hello, we know, we know now, we know who we are because we can unscramble DNA. Oh, yep, it wasn't a little bit few of it later. I got my old science mate saying, yeah, but mostly you's not you. It's a whole bunch of other stuff, mostly in your gut. You know, so that's a fundamental point that we need to make, you know, we we've blundered along as fools perhaps, but we know better now, so let's. Let's go there. And that gut biome is the basis of all your immunology. Thank you, Hugh. You just. Spelled it out there perfectly. That's the basis of it. So I'd just like to. I'd like to also add to the call I've heard in the last three days for local involvement in. In uh decision-making. We've got to, on all of our systems, we need to devolve back to. Um local people observing what they know for a very long time. For the people that are working in it. It's the concept of Katiaki Tonga is Atearoa. We need to devolve all our systems back to there. Um and and in my case, I'd like to try and give some perspective of. The sort of resevolving histories of the drivers, drivers of the pesticide management. And I heard, heard you asking a question before to him here, you know. You know, and I'd like to pose the questions at the end because I want to be optimistic with this whole thing. I want to know. What would the perfect Atearoa solution look like? What do we, what would we like to stand up behind us and? Do our own thing and 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 see if we can shrug off some of this, this international uh international um. Corporate structures that clearly has taken control over a lot of stuff in their lives that. Clearly is not necessarily interested in the benefit for us. So how do we, and how do we do, who's science? And how do we trust the information? That's the word I'd like to end up. So the belief systems, you know, um that on, that it it they're all about being what you're exposed to in your. In your life, um you know, I was a child that grew up next to Tikapu Moana, you know, the Haurakee Gulf diving bush. Not that interested, not that good at the uh, at the at the um, at the necessary schoolwork, but I loved all the other stuff. And um and that that's informed me continuously. So the more we do with our kids. To just be with them and in what with the love, the love of what we've got for a start. We do that. So for me, um well, born forty-nine, so I've been around a little bit too long perhaps. Had a brief touchdown on university after dashing around the bush and diving, sailing, fishing, playing, surfing. And then I ended up um in the Caribbean farming. Because um I'd gone farming and I liked it. Got me out of the outside and doing those things. And um when I was farming um over there, I saw the Americans, uh the American system, political system. Um doing what it was doing to South America and it fundamentally changed me, but I was coming from Atearoa and I. So I knew what I was looking at as an alternative. Remember that, we've always had an alternative, I would argue. Um. Um. But when I stopped doing that, I went sailing for a while. I was running charter boats and I was sailing when I was down there because it was a little island and we were having a lot of fun. And I loved the pelicans. And then, and then of course I. I got to understand that the pelican's eggshells were, and I was stunned really. Back then, that that some small chemical like that on land could do that damage. So thank you very much for that. For Rachel Carson and uh and that, that there was that awakening for me, I suppose. So anyway, back to New Zealand and um farming and uh playing with things um. Just farming and enjoying and trying to figure out how to farm without the use of a lot of inputs and chemicals because I'd seen a bit much overseas perhaps. And um but I did, I did like boat building. And I got myself uh smothered in epoxy resin before they knew that it was not too good for you too. And again, a bit stunning to find out that after a while, that that intolerance for chemicals that was spoken of earlier on in this inquiry. Was a very real thing for me. I couldn't go into the shed and take the lid off without it breaking out in a rash or it affecting me. Took years to sort of wind my way out of that. So the I guess what I'm trying to say is that I'm starting to learn. As we learned always back, that a little bit of something can do a lot of damage and can really affect you fundamentally. We didn't know those things back then. At least I didn't. And the world, the worldview that was coming with me, uh don't don't think we had a great deal of understanding of chemicals. So in that period of time when I was at home, um I did, hadn't seen what I saw, I'd get a little bit active and I did end up as a. Member of the Auckland Harbour Board on the Maritime Planning Authorities in the eighties. And um that had me reading a lot. And I do do like to read and I don't mind reading. Stuff that I don't understand because I figure if you keep reading it, you might understand a little bit what they don't understand and you might understand too. So I do a lot of reading. For better or for worse. And um in those piles of paper came the stunning understanding. That DDT had been applied in the Tamaki estuary. Um in a form, they said that it should have been recently supplied. So I got a hold of a farming mate that I knew that was interested in this whole awakening, fellow called Graham McBride. I don't know where Graham is today, but I thank him for this. You know, he uh he was doing great work in that field. I go to him, Graham, what the hell's going on? He said, oh, they're still producing it. They're producing it down in um it down at Motuaka. And so I went back and we wrote a letter to the pesticide, then pesticides board. We wrote a letter saying, what's going on? And they wrote back and said this. They said. Oh, we're very aware of the DDT and we just make ve- very careful to only license it for home garden products. Because we don't want it to get into our export markets. I'm sorry I didn't keep that letter because it just indicated. The way you were thinking back then. So out the baby water, out with the bathwater, went went to pesticides board. Instead of putting a bunch of good community people on it and being sufficiently outraged at such a stupidity. We allowed ourselves to be rolled into the next thing, which was Emma in the top-down and the international agreements. And we ended up with. With, we ended up with agreements that were uh now, now we're faced with the international trade agreements, et cetera, et cetera. We've lost. We lost control, I would argue, of our um of our own indigenous response to this stuff. And that's what I say that Atearoa, given the facts, given simple messages, will want back. And they'll want to back soon. So let's go for it. So um so on the Harbour Board, I learnt all those things. And then the other one that turned up that shocked me was Tributol tin. There was a French paper I read. It was a little described, you know, paper I read from the French. It discovered that it, if a little bit of Tributol tin on the bottoms of boats, a better tablespoonful could turn all the bivalves in an estuary. Asexual, you know, so that was a shock. So um. And then I got placed under Agbar, which was, yes, okay, two two minutes. Yep. Pity it's not ten, ten or twenty, but never mind. Um I got placed under Agmar, which is the Agricultural Research and Marketing Development Trust. And got to, got to see, got to see that there was just no understanding of soils, depths, diversity. All those things now that are now, now, now public knowledge. So in that chime, just in that decade since then. Uh decade or so since then, we've changed. You could, that that that's public discussion now. I'm giving a case for you to go for it. And um so I took myself in two fourteen to Florence to a biosimulants conference. I figured I'd get there before the big guys worked out this because I'd seen the first one. It was the first international conference on it. I was late. And uh at the same time, Moncenta changed themselves over to uh got got out of from under glyphosate. And Bayer had taken over. And I think that it was all because it's actually, what had changed was the sciences again. Is this that, is that we now had the ability to stick a leaf into something. See whether or not there was a genetic change before and after you did something and you had a pathway. If you've got a pathway, you've got it. So that's. And that wasn't that dear, that gear. And I, as a farmer, still don't have access to that gear. You know, for me to make up my own decision. Because in the finish, this is all about risk analysis. And I'm a bit over other people telling me about risk analysis because I'm a farmer. Every day of my working life, I get up and I make an assessment of what I think I know and I have to deal with it today, not wait for some repeatable science. I'd much rather go and talk to somebody who'd been in the, in the soils and round the ground for a long time and get their risk analysis. And they're very seldom. Uh they're very seldom recognized by academia. So it's what I say, just when you talk about risk analysis, give it back to the people who have to make the decision, please. So um um. And then in two seventeen, I was um because of my activism, I'm proud to say, I was asked to go and go to Chantilly, France on. Soils, climate change and good food. And uh there's an international grouping that got together there. And the same issues were canvassed over and over and it, we're just, but as terms of the, your question, how did this happen? Where the well, there's a book to be written called The Well-Farmed Farmer. The precursor, the change to the gold standard, printing money, capital gain, more market, growth economy. Input-driven production, short-term rates of return and sales. In my, my, my discussion with my mates about what to go, the constant theme, sales. We've just been sold and sold, sold, sold into. When it wears the support for us to do without those inputs. Okay, and literally the example, I think it, I probably shouldn't give it, it was one large drug company that's still in New Zealand. I believe, I can't quite remember the name or odd name them, but they. They went to every vet in the country and offered them a computer system back in the eighties or nineties, somewhere in there. And then shortly after that, became aware that a great deal of the vets, the vets um return was by by way of sale of drugs. And that's just an example of what's happened at every level. Okay, so rather than, okay, is that one minute or gone? Right, so that's it. Um. So I'm arguing for basic human rights to be in this for for my right to make my assessment as a farmer. With the information, we want information that's coming for us. And um a question or two around how that fits with the glyphosate had worked for me.
Very much, Max. Yes. I know um that, you know, the farming community has very much been um. You know, on our minds and we, we were very glad that, you know, you could be part of this discussion. Um so yeah, can I open up questions to the commissioners for Max?
Sure, I'm I'll I'll start with, yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Max. Um I'm really interested in what you say is. Because I don't know about the, you know, the, the actual things that farmers might want to do and use, but you say. Tests that you can use on the ground. I mean, are you thinking of, like you said, something about dipping a leaf in and looking at the changes, I. Um are you thinking of soil biome easy tests? Are you thinking of pesticide residue tests? I uh just um a bit of more of measuring what is, like if they knew that pesticides were getting into the water and there was a quick. Simple dip test, you know, if you think farmers would use all of that and try and avoid it? Is it lack of knowledge? That's simply enabling the s- the business as usual to carry on? And what kinds of ones would you think, you know, would be?
Firstly, you'd better unscramble it, or would rather that you always prefix farmer with type of farmer. It's like me saying about um lawyers. Catherine, that's having had a father as a lawyer and uncle, you know, and a grandfather as a lawyer. Uh there's needs to be a prefix of the type. So farmers, farmers are the same as any other grouping. Uh what I would argue is that those, that that those are my colleagues that I really enjoy spending time with, the ones who've just spent their time inquiring. Into what they're doing and learning and living with it. And we used to have, once, once upon a time, we used to have a great deal of help with that. When I first was farming as a, you know, pimply teenager, they uh they used to have farm discussion groups. And uh they, there was an employed farm discussion group by the state, by the state, by the MAF at the day, and they would. They would coordinate the discussions. Well, they, along came the eighties, they were all given thirty grand in a car. And uh they went and worked to sell money for the banks, all the good ones. So it just, we lost, we lost that. I would argue, what I'm arguing for, what I'd really like to be understood is is that we have this sort of evolution that we can take, take hold of now. There's a different time now and we know all that stuff now. We know that the uh, that the, that the international money market has forced where we've gone, et cetera. So I'm looking for Catherine Dante, I'm looking for a regime that enables those of us to go somewhere independent. For whatever measurements might interest us. Don't, don't diminish. The intellect of somebody who spent their entire life trying to figure out why things grow, don't grow, why things are alive and don't aren't alive. And have had the benefit of being around a whole lot of other people, including Mayor Loko Leewi and who, you know, who, who are similarly interested in it. So just give them, give everyone the tools. There's too much top-down. We need a lot more bottom-up. I'm arguing for a change and I'm arguing for that to be in the structure.
And 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 that sounds great. And you asked for a segue into an application to glyphosate.
Oh, yes, I just want to point out in terms of the uh information, it's only just recently that we, I got to read a paper. That that um where somebody had bothered to go, where somebody had taken the bit, the trouble to go and work out what the formulations were. And work their way back up the formulation. And so as the, the information that we've been running on, and I heard it today, is that glyphosate is a. Is toxic at certain levels. And of course, what we find is, finally, they worked their way back through it, was the formulations were various petrochemicals. The surfactants. Well, every farmer that I know knows this. That's interested, knows this, that it's the surfactants that do the damage. They're the ones that destroy the membranes and places. It's that ability to change things through membranes at very minute levels and whatnot. And so we wouldn't, they didn't have to supply. For the regulatory authorities, they didn't have to supply the full formulation. They said, oh, no, glyphosate's the uh, the uh, the chemical that's. That's under scrutiny, that's all they supplied for testing. So no one tested the full formulation. So you see my point? I, I want the basic human right as a farmer, for me and my community. To know what's being used. We need to localize this decision-making so that we can, and we need to put a structure into place. Where one sage old friend of mine said, how can you believe anything you read today? We need to go to that trust business so that we can get people, because people don't. Waste their time looking at something where they don't trust the source. And I, I have to say. That uh at the risk of taking my optimistic view that things can change, um a little bit, I have to say that when we, when we hear. When we hear people saying that the parliamentary commission is saying, oh, science is fragmented, people have forgotten. That he was the minister that tore our, tore our Crown Research Institutes and put them into silos. And now he's complaining about it. So the sooner he goes, the better. And we get someone that interconnected, that understands the interconnectedness is what we had. We did actually have science structures that, yeah, they were captured. Yes, they had all five teams. And yes, they, they are changing into, they need changing, they, they needed changing somewhat over the five teams, but not throw it out. And give it to, to academia to, to charge us for any time they make a decision based on some information that comes from New York. It's just silly. It doesn't add scrutiny. If we can get simple about that, um the people in Atearoa will go with. the people in our T O R go with that. They want to eat good food too. They get the Siskiyou make pathway now. They understand that, that whatever that minor traces can do. You don't need, tiny traces of things can make a big difference. That's what I learned for sure when I went to the biosimulants conference. That was, that was a positive idea. What can we put on that can, like, you know, a bit of seaweed, for example, how does that work? You don't hear those naysayers saying that it's snake oil anymore because the research was done. And the pathway changed. And Monsanto got out, got out and get in, they're getting into, they, they then now they're spending their time trying to, to own patents on life. You know, they just changed their business model. So they're about making money, Emma. I mean, it's, it's crass. It might be difficult to understand, but shortest term rate or return possible, that's been the game, mate. Doesn't matter about the future.
We loved your phrase about we're in a revolution and we don't know it. We love that, Max. That's a really great phrase. We'll remember that.
Well, the thing is, is you don't, you seldom know you're in one while they're happening.
I'm aware we're short of time, but yeah, Mariel, did you want anybody?
Thank you.
Some last questions?
Max, hello. Very nice to see you. And I'm very aware that I owe you a phone call from a long time back. But look, I just have one quick question based on something that you said. You indicated that farmers like you want to know what's going on. And you're relating to the glyphosate formulations and not knowing what's in them. We have a law in New Zealand that prevents anybody knowing what's in them other than the EPA. Is this something you'd like to see changed?
Well, here you see, none of it's radical enough for me. Why aren't we just wanting a diff, yes, of course, that law should be thrown out tomorrow. What right has somebody got to do that to me? And anyway, they don't enforce the laws that are there. We've got people that are spraying all sorts of stuff that are supposed to have a register, they're supposed to tell their neighbours. Doesn't happen in every case. No one, no one's enforcing it. There's a whole lot of enforcement that aren't happening. It's a, it's a, it's a pack of cards, okay? So, but yes, no, I'm arguing for us to say, take this piece of time in history. COVID's delivered some stuff, okay, internationally. The Indian government that we are involved with through, through Vijay Kumar and they are just going straight towards the idea of food quality, immunology and health. That's, it's just so obvious to me. It's so obvious to many of us. No one in this, no one I'm looking at doesn't get that. Because you only have to spend a little time being interested. The public gets it. So we need, we need to change those things so we can make our decisions. It's just, who's got the right to make a risk analysis for me on my farm? I'm the one that has to do that. I'm the one that's got potential of, if we're wrong. Look, let's just go back to this overseer that we've managed to get rid of. Thank you, Damien O'Connor. Thank you, Megan Woods. Thank you, this government, for getting rid of that stupid idea that they could model life to that degree and ignore hydrology. It's just, was just not fit for purpose. It just didn't work. And go back to that and say, there was people making decisions about all that stuff. And they weren't given all the information. The information was held by, held by the overseer people. It's just not, you know, given a decent room of people that have got the right to make a decision. It lasts ten minutes. You know, so we just need to make the case strong for change back so that we can make our own decisions about these things.
Very much, Max.
Can I just get in there very quickly? Thanks, Max, for answering that part of that question. Sorry about that. I just want to make, I just want to share very quickly a statement that was made by Bishop Bennett back in, I don't know if you remember Bishop Bennett. And he said that if Maori or indigenous people, if Adam and Eve were indigenous and they were in the Garden of Eden, they would have left the apple and eaten the serpent.
I just didn't want, thank you. And I didn't want to be overly pessimistic. I think that there's an enormous change, a change. Let's not overcomplicate it. Let's, let's, let's make a, I'd love to see you people do, at the back of your work, be with us, back us for those who ask for the change, for the review. We've asked for that and it's on its way. That decision-making's on its way through the political processes. It's just so obvious. It just, it just, it just, it just couldn't be any other way, really. You know, it's, you know, yeah, cool.
Thank you. Thank you ever so much for your presentation. And I wish, I wish we had more time, but well, sadly, we have to move on. But we can pick up this conversation, I'm sure, at a later date. Thank you again. We're just going to, we're just going to take a few minutes breather while we just swap over the speakers. Next, we've got Frank Rosen from King Country, who's also a veterinarian scientist. And he's made a study of administrative law as well. So he's an interesting character that I know personally. So just give us a few minutes to swap things around and take a breather. There we go. There's Frank. Welcome, Frank, to the People's Inquiry. So Frank is not too far away from me down in Mata Mata and has got a veterinary background. And has done lots of research on glyphosate and has a particular interest in the EPA. There you are, Frank. I can see you.
I can't see you.
Oh, okay. Welcome. And so we can see you, okay? We can hear you.
Oh, that'll do then. I can't, I can't see you. I can see you, but I can't see the panel.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, can you sort something out or what?
Yeah, sometimes it's an option on your screen for your view. Instead of just seeing the speaker, you can view a tiles list.
Top, top right hand corner, there should be a little option for view and then you can.
Oh, on your, little.
You click gallery.
Yeah, and then you should be able to see everybody, apart from you've gone now.
Oh, just.
Okay. The wonders, the wonders of modern technology in this Zoom.
Well, you know, I'm pretty good at that, actually. You know that. What am I supposed to do now then?
Well, don't worry about.
Can you, can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you well and we can see you. So the floor is yours. I'll, I'll come up and sort of give you a wave or a reminder. Minutes before.
Okay, so if you can see me, you can see this flow chart that I've got behind me. And just to show the complexities. But first of all, I've got to say two things. One is you referred to me as coming from the King Country. I don't, I'm from Mata Mata, which is in Waikato. The other thing is, please do not refer to me as a veterinarian. The last time that happened, some referred to me as a veterinarian. I was threatened with a $10,000 fine from the New Zealand Veterinary Association.
Oh, I apologise, Frank. I'm sorry.
I've made my public statement. So, and the reason why that that happened when I brought to the notice of people, when they Clostridium botulinum scale, when Fonterra found it. And I made the point that if the war, I forsake we have in the system, more that is likely to happen. And for that, on that conversation, they, someone referred to me as a veterinarian. And I'm not, I'm not. Right. And also, I would like to take up, the big part of my thing was the the so-called registration of pesticides based on my experience the last few years. The, and that was what previous Max brought up. And he brought up the, the question of the registration of it and not being, it hasn't been registered properly. And that's my whole argument. And we'll get on to the legal aspects of that afterwards. But the point is that in the animal, animal revenue, agricultural compounds are very medicine-type, whose purpose is to make sure that we don't have any, we look after the public health. There's no dangers of any dangers to overseas trade. It says in there, in section twenty, twenty-one, that you must, all agricultural compounds, of which glyphosate is one, so is so is the baits used in ten eighty, they all agricultural compounds under the Federal Medicine Act. So they have not been, they have not been tested. And it says in section twenty-one, should be the trade name product. And that means the, the active ingredient, which in this case with, and the argument I was making then was glyphosate, and all, everything else that goes in there, that's all the adjuvants, which are surfactants, which are that make the thing go penetration, make it stay on the, stay on the plant longer and allows increased penetration of the cell in plants. So, but they are not included in, there is no, no, and there was no, at that time, there was no papers and you researched published, and we'll get on to that in a minute. There was no, it wasn't, it wasn't published to of the, oh, sorry, I've lost my train of thought now. But they, the, the point is that they, there is no, oh, that's right, there's no international research published, which was showing that the the trade name product has, has been registered until Sarah Lini and his fellows in County, France, they, they produced the, that evidence and to show that it did not thing. And subsequently, that team has gone ahead and made lots of comments about the fact that the, the other adjuvants, et cetera, are more toxic than the actual glyphosate. Now, at the time, we actually, about that time, we went to, we've, a group of us found glyphosate, had it tested at a private lab, and then we found glyphosate in milk. So we took it to Fonterra and said, look, you've got a problem. We found this. What are you going to do about it? So they said, oh, it's not our problem, it's N P I problem. So we went to N P I. And we had a meeting. And at that meeting, we had the toxicologist, chief toxicologist of N P I and the similar person from the, from EPA. And in the discussions that were done there, Jody was one of those four. I was there and there were two more people, including Claire Bleakley from G E P New Zealand. And we were told that, oh, it's a load of rubbish, that is not correct. That is not what Sarah Lini has said is what is not correct. We then, when further questioning him, asking the people, I forget which one it was, but he said, he actually ended up admitting that he had not even seen the paper. And that is the problem that we've got, that they, the published research, which, which we have, which we have on our side, we, I, I run, I've got a, a blog site now whose mission is to raise the public awareness for the mental health, health effects of fluoride and glyphosate. And in there, we, that's what we were doing. And that is where we, the big part of my submission was on there. But they, not only is the glyphosate trade name product not being tested because it's, they, what they did in two thousand and eleven, they introduced some regulations called ACBN, Agricultural Compounds and Veterinary Medicines, brackets exemptions and prohibitions, brackets, regulations. And that was giving exemption to adjuvants. And it described what they are, surfactants and water modifiers and all this sort of stuff, the stuff that goes into the trade name product. Now, in view of the fact that that Sarah Lini paper had come out with, that the surfactants, some of the adjuvants are actually more toxic than thing. On the other hand, in that regulation, and they refer to the inert contents, that they, adjuvants and what have you are inert. Now, my dictionary definition of that is that it's without action. It comes from a Greek word, you know, the Greek inertia. But what they did, they were using, they given its own definition of inert is not the active ingredient. Since then, the, there's been a, there was a big court case in the European Union, Court of Appeal, Court. Anyhow, so someone was taken to court by the companies because they, they were saying these things about glyphosate. The result of that thing, and you must excuse me because I'm out of sequence because of what you said. So blame him. And the European Court finding. And I'm quoting here from the Identification of Active Substances, that this, this court decided that in there, that anybody who is registering a pesticide hazardous substances, including microorganisms, having general or specific action against harmful organisms or on plants, parts of plants or plant products are to be regarded as active substances. So what they're saying is that they, and that's what the ACBN Act is saying, is that we've got to test the trade name product. And they, they've gone a little bit further, this court has gone a little bit further in saying that you must test individually all the ingredients in there. And then we come on to the, the question of, and they must take into account known cumulative and synergistic effects, which implies, excuse me, implies taking into consideration the effects caused by the interaction between a given active substance and inter alia the other constituents of the product and the interaction between the section substances, say softness, synergistic and the co-formulations must be taken into account in such assessment. That does not happen in anywhere. And obviously, it is moving that way in Europe. So having been thrown off my, my, what I was going to, going to say, I will then now go on to.
One more minute, please, Frank, before we open for questions. Just one more minute.
Oh, one more minute. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, crumbs, I haven't started yet. The disclosure of, basically, it means that, and the legal, the legal, the failure of, of the EPA and N P I to register the things properly hinge on the on delegated legislation. And under that come the, the point of the disclosure of relevant material. That is, there's a legal requirement to reproduce all the relevant information before any decision is made. And I just quote from, and this is in, I'm quoting from P H O, this is constitutional and administrative law and all this. They, as far as improper, under the heading of improper purpose, which is in twenty-three, two, one of the fourth edition, which is sitting behind me here. A decision, a, a Lord Green judgment was that he agreed that authority acts unreasonably if its decision is so absurd that no sensible person could even dream that it lay within the bounds of the authority. Um, and that is the basis of the argument. There are all sorts of other other arguments, uh sections of illegality. Another one, for example, um is that a relevant considerations. Reliant reliance on an irrelevant irrelevant uh consideration or failure to weigh. A mandatory relevant consideration will vitiate the decision making. That means it's still not on board, it is illegal. And this is all in sections of the illegality section of Joseph's book, and there's heaps of them. That's I've only had time to mention uh to mention those, but I would like to refer to. Um, finally, to my, what I was, the website that I that I got. Um, our mission is to, as I say, raise the awareness of the health effects of um. Glyph, well glyphosate and glyph and and fluoride and together, if you look on the on the the thing behind me there. They both come to because they they both chelation of minerals and they they are antibiotics. And they are endocrine disrupting chemicals and they all have extremely, uh they are. It is known that they affect children, that is from the preconception even, right through until they're being. Um, that they are, that they are more susceptible to any poisons that are going around. Um, so in actual fact, the the other ones, and it's also under the the precautionary principle. I'll just mention now, that's all I've got time for, the precautionary principle, which in section five of has no, I, they everybody. They've got to take account of the precautionary principle, which is under the the written, under the Rio Declaration. But I would like just mention, but I, as I say, I think it's a very important point. About the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of the Child and the human rights generally. That all these, all these things that I'm talking about, and I just, I'll just highlight one. There are two things there, uh the amino acids that Hugh Jelly mentioned are tryptophan, phenylalanine and tyrosine. Tyrosine is the actual basic, basic element of the thyroid gland, the thyroid hormone. So you get all the effects of that, um of the thyroid, uh thyroid hormone deficiencies. Uh, in that affecting uh the mental health. And the other one is that they from from tryptophan is um. Well, two things come from that. One is um um the glutathion, which is a um. The um the probably the best antioxidant we can get. And um and the other one is the actual production of serotonin. Now serotonin and and. Is the one essential um uh product for brain development, for myelination. And that again, fluoride comes into there because the the that the the fluorine. Uh fluoride in fluorine in any whatever fluoride fluoride fluoridated compound you've got. Has an effect on the thyroid gland because it substitutes for iodine.
Sorry, Frank, can I, can I stop you there, Frank? Sorry, because I want to leave um time for questions and I know that. We need to have a have a ten minute break before the final speakers, so um yeah, can can um. Can I hand over to the commissioners to see if there's any questions for Frank?
I just have one, Frank. Thank you so much, Frank, for your um testimony and um. I I I just wanted to just ask you about the glyphosate and milk that you'd mentioned and when was that? Possibly, when was that? When did that happen? What year was that?
It's probably about two or three years ago now.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, so I wonder if there has there been further tests made on the um on milk?
Not not to my knowledge, we haven't, we 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 haven't, we haven't, because it takes, it costs a lot of money. And um and yeah, we got the same problem. I tested, I took some um. Well, I'll go back a bit. With the the sources of glyphosate that come into it, into the food chain. Over the last five or ten years, they've increased immensely in but two thousand and fourteen figures for the importation of. Of soy from Argentina was about a hundred and sixty three thousand tons per year. Last year, we imported three hundred and sixty odd tons of glyphos- of of soy from. Um, Argentina and Brazil and there is also and and maize. And also a product called dried distillers grains, which is coming in from the United States. We used to get it in for cattle feed from Australia, which was wheat based, but this. Dried distillers grains is made from the ethanol. It's a byproduct of the ethanol product from maize in America. They couldn't sell it in China. And this is there again about two or three years ago, um they um they couldn't sell it in China because the Chinese refused to take GE products. So there was a lot of um dried distillers grain on the world market and we imported a lot more. And this time up to now, with those three products, we are now up to roughly a metric, one million metric tons. Of those products going into the chooked food and dairy food, pig food, if we've got any pigs left. Um, and they are going in the food chain and that is a big thing. The other one. Um, the other source of glyphosate, which has improved a hell of a lot, improved and increased a lot. Is the desolation of crop, desiccation of crops. They spray it just before, just before harvest. And that includes potatoes, it includes, um it includes the maize and it's um. Basically, that that's what what it is, but that is actually um uh used in 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 the feed. And it is a big part of the feed at certain times of the years, made into the, for the dairy cow, it's made into the um into silage. And that is also, and it's also grown on ground, which is treated with glyphosate beforehand. And it is using near seed, which is coated with neonix, which was Jody mentioned this morning. And that goes through the whole plant, so it's actually in the. And and the seed that is produced by that, it's not only that, it's it is actually comes out in the fluid. Which is the equivalent of sweating it by plants and whatever, that which is extremely attractive to bees. And I was. A few years ago, about four years ago, I I had the pleasure of, Don Huber stayed with me for that. Four or five days and we went round and we happened to come across a beekeeper. Uh, he'd just brought his hounds back, about twenty five, thirty hounds back from the bush for the monarch of honey. This was about January, end of January. And of course, they, it's quite quite hot there. And he took them onto a dairy farm, which had been taken on to several years for because of the to feed on the clover crops. They, and he called me in and there was a two inches depth. Of dead bees, of the equivalent of a of a five bale dairy shed, a little of concrete in there. And that was, that that the reason for that was all all sorts of things, including possibly, well, mainly because of the fungicide. Um, and they also was, we've got a lot of poultry houses around in around Matamata. Um, and they spray the the outside of the of the chook sheds with insecticide because of the fly problem. So that was another source of of one. I I was involved with a a a M R release, which was up for renewal. On land which has been found horticulturally uh for about thirty years since I came to Matamata in eighty five. They, we went through, went went through that, um because of people were were sick and they were fed up with the. The spraying and the spray that was going on in that, the the spraying program for that, for those crops immediately around that house. Was included, there were seventeen different, different pesticides, of which seven of them were fungicides. And you know what they are doing to the fungi in the soil and somebody mentioned um phytothra. Um, and 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 cowry diabite, they, it makes you wonder, that is because glyphosate. Is known, it's actually, it's actually how it kills plants. It reduces the chicken melty pathway, which you jelly mentioned. It reduces that and and that um is known to increase uh the incidence of. Fusarium, Pythium and Phytothra fungus. Um, and so there's all sorts of those problems in there. And, you know, I would like to stress that they um that is having a great effect on the health, mental health of children.
One of the things that came, one um that I thought I'd quickly ask, because I know we're definitely running out of time, but Nadine again. Um, she talked about, she asked a question about um. This feed going into, being used for salmon and fish species and salmon farming, whether it's in there and. Whether it's been any detection in cattle meat.
Um.
Bound to be by the sounds of things.
The, I, well, I I do know that, you know, I mean, it will be, the soy will be included, I'm pretty sure, in fish food, fish food, even maize, I don't know exactly. I haven't gone in there, but I do know, I work, I'm in con- in correspondence with a team of doctors in Norway. Who are very um 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 alarmed at the amount of um P R Ps, that's persistent organic. Pesticides um in in children in Norway from and and the salmon, but they um. So if they are, I'm waiting for an answer back because I was asking that very question, how much? How much glyphosate and these other things are in the feed that we're feeding to the salmon over there, but their children. Um, it's, it was one of the things I was going to get on to is actually from the gut biosis, dysbiosis, this caused by glyphosate. They, all the vitamin B, all the vitamin Bs are um reduced because they are produced from the gut, from the. Certain bacteria in the in the colon mainly, and they are, the ones that I'm particularly interested are B one. Which is thiamine and the B nine, which is your um, the stuff that we're putting um. Putting in bread now, um and they, because of the mental health effects on 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 children and they. They are finding that children, young babies who have these reflux problems, they are responding to. Vitamin B one and B twelve injection. So there's there's all that, which is an area, I'm actually researching very deeply at the moment. And um it's, you know, it's alarming what's going on because it affects the basic. Um, respiration, the use of oxygen, um you know, what what keeps us alive and it keeps plants alive, it keeps them soil more. Microorganism is the Krebs cycle, which is affected severely by, you'll hear about that with through the ten eighty, through the. Um, fluorine acetate change into the citrate. Well, that citric acid cycle is Krebs cycle, it's the same thing. There are, all these vitamin Bs are actually involved in the production in in that cycle. So you've got chronic.
Can we stop there, Frank? I'm really sorry to interrupt the the flow, but definitely this is something that we can come back to. I'm I'm conscious that we need to crack on with the last two speakers and we need to have a quick break. Now to get a, to get a breather before the the last session. So thank you very much, Frank Rosen, for your.
Welcome. Thank you.
Contribution and your submission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll just take a short break now, five minutes, if that's okay. Kiora, welcome back to the People's Inquiry, the last two sessions of the day. And I'm very pleased indeed to welcome my colleague Asha Anderson, um who has been the rock. At the centre of this project and I can't emphasize enough, Asha, how appreciative we are of your. Facilitation and persuasion and gentle prodding. Over the last two years that has enabled, there's no doubt that it wouldn't have come to fruition like it has today without you. So I'd like to just seriously take this opportunity to thank you from all of us. Um, for for making sure that we we got, we reached this essential stage. Um, of the People's Inquiry. So thank you, friend.
Thank you very much. The same goes back to all of all of you amazing women on the committee. Um, you know, it's, yeah, it was a group effort to get here and it will take all of us, you know, um all of us to um to shift things, so. Um, thank you for the opportunity, commissioners, to speak to you today. I I'll just get into it. I. I'm really just going to share a bit about my story and how I kind of came to be involved in this. Um, I have never been poisoned, by the way. I am just witness to a lot of what's going on. So, um, so Kyorakoto, my name is Asher Anderson and I live up here in the Bay of Islands, Famuroa area. I'm very, very fortunate to live on a piece of land that I am Kai Tiaki too. Um, it is just a little over five hectares of native and some native forest with some exotics some throughout it. Um, and we have a lot of incredible wildlife where I live and I'm very, very passionate about looking after it. Um, in the way that I feel comfortable with. Um, and it's, that's holistic and coming from a permaculture. Um, holistic perspective where we consider from the microbes all the way up. Um, another unique factor of where I live is that it's called the Yari Valley. And Y meaning water and Ari meaning spring water flow. Um, so it's where the water flows and for more than eight months of the year. The ditches on either side of the road are flowing, flowing with spring water. Um, and there's multiple springs that come down through the gully on our property. Um, but above that is a road, so a road that gets poisoned by the council. So anyway, so that that will come up, but so just starting my my story, um back in twenty eighteen. I am, I, our community heard rumors about some aerial ten eighty operations that were being planned by the Department of Conservation. Um, in our district, but we didn't have any other information about it. So some of us got together and we put in an official information act request. Um, with doc, um and after some time, they returned um the answers to about twenty questions that we had for them. And it confirmed to us that they were planning an aerial ten eighty operation um on an area in Fangaro called Matangido. And as well, um another one across the bay in the Russell State Forest. Now, when we got this information, we quickly, we very quickly started to call Hui around the area. To let people know that this was happening because the community didn't know. Um, and this prompted quite a severe reaction from people. Um, because there have been drops up here before many years ago and people remember. So over several Hui, you know, more than seventy people, a hundred people gathered. Um, in the halls and the rugby clubs where we discussed this. Um, and what actually came to light was the consultation document that we asked from the Department of Conservation. Who had they consulted to allow them to plan these aerial ten eighty poisoning operations? And so part of the information that they returned to us was a list of people that they said that had been consulted on this. Um, but actually, in reality, what had, what had actually happened was that was completely fabricated. Um, and that was something that came out at these meetings. Um, so there were thirty six organizations, individuals, um groups. Trusts that were on that list. Um, and it turned out that the vast majority of them had not heard about it. Many of them were put down as being in support of these aerial poisonings. Um, but in fact, they had never been consulted and they had never given their support. Um, so that was the first thing that really shocked me. Unfortunately, my my property. Where I live, the land on which I live, is actually a continuation of the Pukati Forest, which is a twenty twenty thousand hectare. Beautiful native Kauri forest. And so I'm very, very conscious and aware that poison has been used, the aerial poison has been used there before. Um, and so that's what really, um, you know, made me concerned about my own spring water. But then to learn that it was actually across the way, ten minutes away in Matangidal, that was, that this was going to be happening. Needless to say, the pushback from the locals, the Iwi and the Hapu was immense. And um they got on the phone to the Deputy Prime Minister at the time, Winston Peters. Um, who sent out his community liaison, Marion Walsh, and she came to our community Hui. Um, and she spoke to the people who were on that list as having been consulted and confirmed that it was a fraudulent consultation. On that basis, the Department of Conservation said that they would. On that basis, the Department of Conservation said that they would postpone the drop. But we knew that it wasn't going to happen. It had been stopped and they'd never come back again. However, across the way at Russell State Forest, despite injunctions, despite petitions, despite protests, despite people camping out at the the hopper loading zone, they went ahead and they poisoned that forest. And $600,000 was wasted, you know, poisoning that forest against the wishes of the locals. Quickly after that, I began to see and hear stories from people. People caught in the drop with pellets raining down on them. One young woman in particular, a local Maori woman, was planting her newborn child's, excuse me, fenoa, in the fenoa. She was in, so she was planting the placenta of her newborn child in the Nahiri at the time that a poisoning operation was happening. So she had to cower under trees to stop the baits from hitting her. Sorry. I also had locals send through photos. They walked the Awa a day after the drop. And they found, they found dead pigs and dead birds and dead opossums. Many of them floating in the water, the Awa where they take their water from. They also found dead eels and they had thought those eels had been extinct, locally extinct. They didn't know that they were still present in that area. So, to have those eels turn up dead. I'm sorry, it's very upsetting for me. So, so that that happened, that went ahead. And around the same time, one of the Northern Regional Councillors, Mike Finlayson, decided it would be a good idea, he went into the forest with a group of people to look at the look at, look at, you know, what animals were there and what could be seen. He went in with some locals. And he took some water from the stream and he, he actually publicly stated that he would drink it in order to prove to people that that it wasn't toxic. And so what ensued was a series of letters to the editor between him and myself, you know, trying to actually say that this is completely unacceptable that he would do such a thing, a councillor, to try to convince people that poison in their water is okay. So there was, there wasn't, there wasn't, there was an independent investigation into his conduct. And they, the independent investigator found that he had breached the code of conduct. However, there were no repercussions from the Northern Regional Council. So anyway, around this time, around this exact time, Emil Leaf and Alan Alan Gorden from the West Coast down in South Island, began their national hickoi, walking the length of New Zealand to raise awareness around the aerial 1080 operations that were happening all throughout the country, particularly on the West Coast. So they actually came through Kaio. And at this time, right before the Russell State Forest drop, I believe, there were, there were national protests. Thousands of people marched on Parliament. And in Kiri Kiri, in the area where I live, 200 people marched in the street to say that this is not okay. Excuse me. I think it's been difficult to listen to so many, so many people's experiences over these last three days. Anyway, give them my second. All right, so where am I at?
Take your time, Asha.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't need to go into the science, everyone else has already said it. The information is there, the information is there. So these experiences prompted me and people, my friends up here and people who are very concerned and people that I've met through these experiences, to actually decide to start an organisation, start a non-profit because we felt like there's no voice. Where's Greenpeace? Where's Forest and Bird? Where's the SPCA? Where are these advocacy organisations that should be speaking out on behalf of animals and people and the environment? They don't exist. So we started Flora and fauna of Aotearoa, a brave new voice for all creatures, great and small, including people. So, and so we are Flora and fauna of Aotearoa and we must care for us all. So really, our values are an environment free of pollution, cruel and cruel and inhumane toxins, respecting the rights of nature, water, soil and flora and fauna, and sustainable and regenerative land management. So that's what we are interested in, offering a different perspective, one that takes us back to that whole perspective. Instead of this reductionist approach. So in April 2019, we set up a conference in Auckland, our first national conference to call people together who were interested in this kind of thing and shifting the paradigm, moving forward, creating change. An interesting thing, that was a great conference, we met a lot of wonderful people and we had a lot of great speakers. And that's where I actually met Hannah Blackmore and Stephanie McKee and a number of other people who have been involved in this inquiry. Interestingly enough, the venue that we chose in Titterangi in Auckland, a beautiful venue called Lopdell House. When we arrived to set up, and I was talking with the organiser, she mentioned to me quietly, she said, we had the Forest and Bird people come here and ask us not to allow you to use this space. So, there's a real pushback to thinking differently, to questioning these narratives that we're being fed. And that just shows how scared they are and how vulnerable they are to other ideas. You know, and it just shows the lengths to which people go to shut other people down when they don't agree with what they say. So I thought that was really interesting. Another experience that we had, sometime later, in November, in November, in November the same year, a group of us gathered again in Auckland, and that was the forming of the People's Inquiry Committee. That was the forming of the idea of moving forward with this inquiry. So that was all of our committee coming together with a range of other people. And that was a really good meeting. But right around that exact time, that is when hundreds and hundreds of dead rats and other creatures washed up on the Westport Beach. I don't know if you remember, it was in the news. And we, we were able to connect with some locals down there who were able to actually take samples of some of those creatures that had washed up. And we, despite all odds, we were able to find a laboratory that was willing to test them, willing and able with technology. You know, modern technology, willing and able to test those animals. So we went ahead and we did that. And we put out several press releases on it, which I've included in my submission. The results came back that they were killed from 1080. Now, DOC at the same time was putting out their results, which said, of course, that there was no 1080 found. So how could this be? The laboratory that we commissioned also found the green dye marker, which is used in the baits. This is another key clue. You know, DOC didn't look for the green dye marker. Now, when they test, they're not testing for the metabolites of 1080. They know that it becomes metabolised and you cannot find traces of that. You have to test for the metabolites. So, the lab that we commissioned tested for 1080, the metabolites, and found the green dye marker. At that time, that the lab, the condition upon on which our agreement was, was that the lab would have to remain anonymous. This is because this particular person had been threatened in the past for exposing such similar things. Now, that eventually the name of the of the lab technician in the lab came out. And there were all kinds of media articles trying to discredit, you know, trying to, trying to say that the report was fake. We got, we got told so many times that the report, that we forged the report, we never got a visit from the police. We never, we never had anyone come and officially say to us that this is a fabricated report, because it wasn't, it was real. So that was our experience with testing. You know, you won't find what you are not looking for and they are very, very purposefully doing that. And the other issue is that all of the other labs are controlled by the government, one way or the other with the testing. So I've included all of those, all of those links in my, in my submission. So they're using not fit-for-purpose methodologies, you know, to find something that that's, you know, they're looking for something, they're not looking for what's there. Is that one minute Ursula, one minute ago? All right. During this time, we were also contacted by other whistleblowers within DOC and people who had formerly worked for DOC. But unfortunately, as a small non-profit that was inexperienced in dealing with people who want to share very sensitive information and protecting them, you know, there was a very strong climate of fear. So, you know, we were unable to work with them, but we know those people exist. So, let's see. I think there were just a couple of other minor things that I wanted to jump to, that have come up during the course of these years. And that's to do with glyphosate. And I'm not going to go into big detail, but I need to make it clear that councils, councils have a huge role to play in this. And not just through roadside weed management and parks and recreation. It's also through non-compliance clauses that they allow to go into agreements when people buy properties. That you can't complain if there's spray drift. You cannot complain. So there are certain covenants that come with certain properties that actually fine you if you are going to complain about spray drift. My, my own, my own land where I live, there are springs coming out of the road and every summer, when it's so dry and there's no water around, the springs still flow and the bees are all there. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bees on the roadside there in the ditch. And that's right where the council comes along and sprays. Despite the fact that we have no spray signs, you know, this happens regularly. And then that water flows down, you know, the Nahiri where I live, out, out through, people take their water from there. Another instance that was brought up was Kauri snails, many, many dozens of Kauri snails that were found dead in the spray line along the roadside at a local cemetery. And I brought this up with the Northern Regional Council and also the Far North District Council. And they have no response. It's just no response. I think I will have to leave it there. Unfortunately, I wanted to go into human rights and climate change because pesticides, agrochemicals, this is the elephant in the room when it comes to climate change. I really am tired of hearing about climate change when I'm not hearing about what I consider to be the most important things. The greenhouse gases that come off pesticides and how they kill the soil. They completely annihilate its abilities to sequester carbon. They kill all the microbial life. We end up with, you know, sterile soils. And, you know, how can we sequester carbon when we're killing our soils? I'll have to leave it there, unfortunately.
Thank you ever so much, Asha, and thank you for your passion and compassion and commitments to the cause. It's, it's, you know, it's heartbreaking, but it's also inspiring. Has any of our commissioners got questions?
Kiora, Asha, I'm sorry, this is not a question, this is just a statement. Thank you so much for your information, your passion for raising issues that nobody else has raised, which is climate change. It is deeply critical to us and killing the, killing the soil it's supposed to be saving us. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, you're welcome. I feel like there's a lot of red herrings going on in the discussion around climate change at the moment, and I need people to be aware of that. We need to raise our level of awareness around that because you know, our attention is being captured while these elephants in the room are being allowed to actually, as Clyde said, with Predator Free 2050, poisons are increasing. They are increasing this while we are not looking.
The only part of agriculture we look at with climate change is methane emissions from animals and we're not looking at this issue at all.
That's right. And if you actually look at the truth, animals in a system are hugely beneficial. They will be part of what will heal. Heal our soils, heal our environment. It is industrial agriculture. It is industrial-scale agriculture and monoculture, overstocking. Animals in a system are no problem. They bring huge benefits and the microbiology to the soil. It's about these agrochemicals, these pesticides and the monoculture.
Can I, thanks for that. I will, maybe I'll bring a little bit ray of hope. It's not true that we're ignored, climate scientists are ignoring the soils. I follow a lot of climate science and it's getting increasing attention, including in New Zealand. And including from the Climate Commission. So, I, I, it's, I don't think that's as bad as people think, but the difficulty, of course, just because people know about it doesn't mean that it's easy to take action in respect of the drivers. Just like we know about methane, but it's still very hard politically to take action about that particular driver. But, yeah, that is something that, I mean, it's good that it's been raised because we can then comment on it. But, yeah, so thanks for that. And also, so I, no, I don't follow, for example, like, I don't know if there is one, but you talked about all of the, the information about, you know, the dead by-product, the side effects of the 1080 drops, of the unintended side effects. I mean, you, so little communities, you're not the first person to have raised that in this inquiry. And it seems like so many people have, you know, they've got stories about someone who's been walking in the bush and discovered there's, you know, some dead birds, animals, you know, whatever, wildlife, extra baits, lying there in water. And like, is, I don't know this, but do you know, are there people collecting this information? Do you have like, you know, the hotline website with the photos, or the Facebook page? Because it seems like there's a lot of them and they're all disconnected. But that just could simply be my lack of knowing and looking.
I think, I think Clyde Graff is probably the main person who's been collecting, you know, decent evidence via video footage. It's, it's not recommended for people to walk through the forest after it's been poisoned, to be honest. I would be really concerned about their health and any harm coming to them. And of course, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to remove these things. And that's why it, you know, you're not allowed to remove wildlife. If native wildlife, you can be charged, even if it's dead and you want to test it. And this is something that we have come up against, people actually collecting and freezing, you know, taking proper, you know, proper care of of the animal, you know, making sure that it's been frozen, it's been tagged, everything. But they can't find anywhere to test it. And if, if they turn it over to DOC, you know, there's a risk that you have actually tampered with wildlife, native wildlife.
We have a wildlife act that prevents you from taking or possessing even feathers, you know, specimens, all that kind of stuff. No, you're right about that. But even just like you say, if you walk through and you just see all these things, the dead eels, the and I just thought maybe people are taking videos and photos and
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Repository.
It's worth mentioning, Asha, about the poison register in terms of 1080 and brooderifercum. When we do have significant reports and evidence, then that the poison register that I've submitted, is the list of that from, from going back many, many years. And obviously, it's not every incident, because that's just impossible for a few small volunteers to to record and collate. But, and there's, there's other stuff out there, I'm sure. But the victimisation of us as anti-poisoner, you know, anti-poison, it is such that, you know, I mean, there's, there's a reason why us academics aren't in a, in a proper, proper job. You know, and actually, I'm quite pleased that I don't have that association to be worried about, because effectively, it would gag what I am saying right now. And I think, I'm sorry to butt in here, Asha, but I think, I think it's a really important point to say that there is lots more out there and we're just the tip of the iceberg, what, what we're ready to to, to, to stay here and to, you know, God only knows what's behind the sea.
The other aspect is that the communities are largely rural, you know, rural, isolated. You know, often under all kinds of stresses and the stress of having been poisoned, not knowing where to turn, not getting any help when you do turn somewhere. So, you know, it's, it makes total sense that, that, you know, that that body of information, we, you know, we're at that point where we're ready to do it, but there's there's strangleholds there that really prevent that from happening.
All right, can we take a break? Because I know Stephanie is keen to have All right, can we take a break? Because I know Stephanie is uh keen to have her session on time. And we are obviously all very exhausted and need to finish on time if we can. So let's just take a breather for five minutes. And we'll come back for the final session. Thank you ever so much, Asha. Thank you. Hand over to Stephanie McKee for our final session today. What a marathon it's been. Thank you, everybody. And thank you to the attendees as well. We've um had quite a quite a day. So Stephanie's going to share her screen. And Stephanie is one of the committee members who is our our positive singing celebrant. And she's going to talk to us about um the historical patterns of harm denial from a cook, a cocktail of poisons in New Zealand's ecosystems.
Just checking, can you see my screen?
It looks good to me.
Okay, I can't see anybody. I just see the screen, so.
Top right of your corner, you should have an option to view and that and that should give you a gallery view. I'll hand over to you now.
Look, I'll, I can't see the everyone else, but I'll just go to my slideshow. So, um. Greetings, everyone. I'm lucky last. It's been a long journey. And I think I think the quality and diversity of the presentations has shown that we've really, really needed to have this inquiry. And it's only just the beginning. Um I I'm aware of time, I'm aware of everyone being tired. So I, you know, there's always more that needs to be said, but I'll keep an eye on time. Um please button Ursula when it's what, th- four what, what time for? I've got till four twenty, so um about four fifteen?
Yeah, four fifteen, we'll stop for five minutes of questions if you like.
Oh, okay. So dear friends and those who are listening, um this for me has been a lifelong journey. Um so I'll rip into it. This is my overview. Um is because of my background, um this has been a lifelong journey. And um the other main five points are that there is no escape from toxins wherever I've been in my life. Um because of my training, I'm very interested in the psychology of um perception management and also how we cope with our despair and how we channel that into action. And the things I've learnt in half a century about the poison industrial complex, and I have some recommendations, so I'll rip into it. So I'm one of your fifth generation Pakihara. Um my Scottish ancestors were displaced from the Highlands. And I have some fine Scottish names in my pakapapa. Um my grandfather, who I never met, he was a publisher and he wrote about the plight of the chemical workers and the polluted chemical works of Liverpool. His writings inspired me and he said it is never too late in the day to change the order of things. So I've taken that to heart in my life. Um I have some academic training and I worked many years as a teacher. And um so those um that background in my learning and research um has influenced my angle in this issue. Uh so I'm just going to start with a little bit of the family story. Um so my grandfather went to Wellington eighteen ninety, he set up a publishing company and then he went to Nelson and started the apple industry. And then together with his son and um his two sons, set up in the nineteen thirties, the fruit growers chemical company. Initially, this spr- this is for the orchard sprays. And initially, they were reasonably harmless, but after World War Two, the um usual leftover stock of of war chemicals um had to find a new market. And um these very nasty chemicals that has been talked about, they were produced at the Mappa factory for pastoral management of grass grubs and orchard sprays. And and my father died in nineteen seventy-two, the company was bought and sold several times. And when it was closed down, there was a very bad toxic contamination from pesticide dumps. Now, millions of dollars were spent on the remediation of these sites, but they used incineration. And it was actually, um well, I've read all the reports, uh it was pretty bad and um further contamination happened in the remediation, as you can just get a a glimpse at there. Um however, um so there's other threads in this. So my father, he was a scientist, so he he was open to new information and he gave me a copy of Silence Spring by Rachel Carson. And he he must have had an epiphany when he read that. And he organized blood tests for the factory workers and set up a trust that still financially supports those workers to this day. He was taught by his father's writings to do right by the workers. And he was motivated by a patriotic drive to support progress. Um but he also told me a little knowledge is a dangerous thing. So I took that to heart in my life. And I've always researched and tried to pull back the layers of the onion. Now, in our family, my dear mother died far too young from multiple myeloma. And she also had eight miscarriages. So, you know, we've talked about health effects and causality. And we don't, we don't know, that was back in the sixties, you know. Um it takes years to to put these connections together, but of course, it, for me, it was never right that she died so young. My darling sister died not so long ago from motor neuron disease. Um she lived downwind from the Nelson Wharves and there was a cluster of motor neuron cases there with the methyl bromide aerosols. Um their causal connection was dismissed by the medical officer of health. Um as I say here, don't get me started on the criminal recklessness of the EPA extending the permits just recently for the use of methyl bromide. The industry has had ten years to transition. And these um permits keep getting extended. So, you know, this is just one of the many stories. Um why does New Zealand have such a high rate of motor neuron disease? So as I say, this is just one of many stories. Now, back to the family. In the, in the nineteen seventy-two, we had the Club of Rome report and it was like the very beginning of environmental awareness. We started to see the planet as one interconnected being. So um my father was on the Environment Council the year before he died and I read the minutes just to see what he was concerned about. And he was concerned about the disposal of chemical poisons. Unfortunately, as I say here, too little, too late. So I ran away from all this. I I moved to Auckland, Kauramandal. I was working in Auckland as a teacher. And so this second part of my presentation is there's nowhere to hide. Um so this is where I met Hannah in West Auckland in two thousand and two. Um we, together with Merial, were um part of the First Peoples Inquiry um Committee. And these things I learned there, this was for a forty-eight B um to control a painted apple moth. Um what I learned out of that was that corporate proprietary rights dominated over human rights. The ingredients of the spray were kept secret, so even the doctors didn't know. However, some clever sleuthing uncovered the ingredients and showed many to be harmful like methyl, paraben and sodium benzoyl and various others, propylene glycol. You shouldn't breathe this shit. So they were, and there were many, many documented health im- impacts that Hannah on our committee um has put years of work into. So I ran away again. I ran away to the Kauramandal only to encounter more spraying. Um you know, there was the two four five T aerial spraying, then we've got the ten eighty over the sacred mountains and even the regional councils spraying haloxypho methyl over the estuaries. We have local so-called environment groups putting poisons everywhere in bait stations. Um so it was like, there was nowhere to hide. And even on our own land, which I thought might be a pristine sanctuary, we've found legacy arsenic contamination from sheep dips. So, so you know, there's nowhere to hide. Oh, also, you've got this glyphosate on all the remote rural roads, the yellow ribbon of death, I call it. And even in the most extreme remote areas, to me, it seems really pointless. Why are they doing this? It seems to be um increasing as well. And the the grass just grows back, probably resistant. So, you know, in the country, in the rural areas, we see what's going on. So now I'm just going to shift to a slightly bigger picture. Um how's my time? It's four oh one. Um how much more time have I got, Ursula?
You're you're okay. Keep going.
Keep going, I wanna roll. Okay, so um basically, I I looking at the, I'm looking at the patterns. And many campaigns opposing poisons over time get proven right. As the weight of scientific evidence grows and as public opinion pressures for policy change. So this has occurred with radioactive fallout, arsenic sheep dip, lead, DDT, agent orange. So it just takes a long time for the system to acknowledge um the harms that are being done. So um there have been repeated patterns of institutional forces that dismiss the concerns of communities. And we've been facing this more and more in recent ye- years. Um since the advent of social media, the internet, there's many more powerful tools um available to uh influence public opinion. So I'll get on to that point in a minute. Now, social license and trust breaks down as state disinformation campaigns get exposed. And and you've heard evidence of fraudulent consultation and um things like that. So you know, the more that there are lies and disinformation, then the trust breaks down, frustration builds. And especially, um it's a kind of bullying really, where people are ghosted or whole communities are ghosted. That ghosting means they're not um engaged with. Um their serious concerns um are dismissed or flicked off. And their freedom of information requests are um obstructed. So this this builds frustration. Now, along with the social development, uh we have an increasing cocktail of poison. So I won't go into this because we've heard about this for the last three days. It's not one chemical, it's a multitude of chemicals. And so now I want to just raise a legal point and I'd like the our legal experts to look at this. This interests me, you know, um. It's it's been a lot of of revelations like with with Monsanto, the poison papers. Um it's come out that these companies knew years ago the truth of what their products were doing. But they um avoided, they disguised it. So this is criminal recklessness when a party knows they are doing harm. But they conceal that evidence and go ahead and do the harm anyway because obviously it's profits. And there are many ha- uh many examples of communities harmed by toxins, we've heard over the last three days. And those responsible for creating the harm um resist taking responsibility, let alone apologies and compensation. I mean, the two hundred thousand people that were sprayed for two years in West Auckland and with all the health effects documented, there wasn't one, oh, we're sorry about this. Um no, no, this doesn't happen. So we're dealing with mindsets, we're dealing with attitudes, culture. Now, I won't, I won't read this all out, but I think we know this, that there's a a set of beliefs. And it sort of boils down to, you know, we're put on earth to control and dominate nature or we are intimate parts of nature, we are nature. And the other one about pests must be exterminated if ever they interfere with human economic activities. And a shocking example I talked about today was the, you know, poisoning of the Kia. Um because they would come and pick out the ticks on the sheep. Um and also, we have um animal welfare laws that have been changed to allow pest management with toxins. So the law protects business. These are a big, big social problems we're dealing with. And um a sort of dystopian future is um some technology companies are getting terribly excited about um they actually got a lot of money. As you can see, they've been awarded seven hundred ninety thousand to develop drone technology to deliver bait. And it just requires a drone pilot and an office worker. I mean, is this the kind of future we want? So, um again, the the these topics have been touched on, so I'll sweep through it. Um but the one that interests me is the social license. And um DOC contracted with Ipsos, which is an international survey company, very in-depth surveys for five years. And it showed that DOC was steadily losing its uh support for aerial poisoning. And um DOC has become a very um paranoid in a way. Um uh and they engaged in surveillance on activists. Um I'll come back to that point. Um because I talk English and and we analyze advertisements, I was always interested in the public relations side of it and how people's attitudes get manipulated. So we know that DOC and government departments have communications departments. And we know that actually millions of taxpayers' dollars have been spent on advertising, social media. Um public relations teams sitting around um planning their target messaging, uh controlling the merit narrative, placing articles at the right time. So, you know, the the people on the ground, we can't compete with this. It's not a level playing field. So there's a huge amount of money put into manipulating public opinion. And so poisons have been normalized. Um that's been mentioned today. Um but how does this happen? I just want to drop a few thoughts in there. Um the process of desensitization and psychic numbing, when empathy and sympathy are extinguished and people be disconnected. Um and and it's a form of collective sociopathy. Um this is what I feel after my many years of research, that we are are dealing with a spiritual malaise. And so it's quite, you know, there's a lot of deep therapy is needed to shift the mindset. Um I'm sorry, I'm jumping around. Well, I've talked about criminal recklessness and there were a few examples. Um and this is a sort of an example of inducing fear, you inflate the threat. Um Rachel Carson commented on this back in the early sixties. This is a technique of exaggerating consequences. Um and yeah, this is what we've observed in the Kauramandal. A sort of militaristic culture. Um and of course, the military language has been noted by many um uh critical thinkers. Um and the surveillance, there was a commission of inquiry into DOC's use of surveillance. Um it it shows a very paranoid mindset. Um and this has been mentioned, the demonizing and the othering of anyone who quest. And this has been mentioned, the demonising and the othering of anyone who questions the dominant narrative are labelled anti-ten eighty brigade, that was one, NUTS, anti-science. And John Key used the eco-terrorist label to blame the ten eighty milk powder extortion threat on, on the anti-ten eighty movement, but in fact, the criminal came from the heart of the poison industry. These are all the stories that we've experienced. I'm interested in rebranding, and I think it promotes collective amnesia. And there's a few examples. It's quite, yeah, Tia Kina Ngamani, protect the birds, that's quite a recent one. And it was Battle for the Birds, and they must have heard that people were saying, oh, you're very military. And so, okay, on to the positive, turning the tide. I believe that there are many people, many good people working in conservation and inside these institutions. And that they are conflicted about the use of poisons. You know, that we, we must not demonise people and otherise people, you know, that people are humans and they have pressures put on them. Which cloud their thinking. Now I want to move on to solutions and my recommendations and then I'm, I'm done. So there's some wonderful examples of poison-free zones out there in the world, and I think we need to do some here. These are stories. And when an area becomes poison-free, it has many benefits for their economy, so let's look at that. And so governments have shown they can act fast in emergencies. So we have a contamination emergency and we need to shift the huge psychological blind spot. Now here's my seven recommendations. Let's invest, I mean, there's billions of dollars sloshing around. So, you know, let's invest in things that are going to help the health and wellbeing of our nation. Regenerative farming and organic industries. Soil remediation innovations, and we've heard of some in Whakatani, which is amazing. Now, I'm interested in seeing more sustainable building materials. Because obviously the toxins involved with pine, which is a crack wood, actually. We need a good hardwood forestry and industrial hemp for hempcrete and more support for earth building. And for more recommendations, I've mentioned the, the poison-free zones. I feel the precautionary principle must be embedded in New Zealand environmental law. I'd support that the ACC Act gets reformed, and of course, this has come up in the last few days. And what hasn't come up before is the marvellous example of the Whangarei River. And the unique legal personhood that has been granted to that. I think that should be expanded all around Aotearoa. There you go.
Thank you very much, Stephanie, that was fantastic. Thank you for that, very good overview. We're reaching the, we're reaching the end of our day.
Yeah.
So before we, we go to our closing comments and
We're going to have a bit of a question with the
Yes, we're going to have some questions for you, Stephanie, before we go to, yeah. So who, who would like to start with a question for Stephanie?
Kiora, Stephanie, that was brilliant. I know she don't have any questions for you, partly because I'm so exhausted, but also because that was so thorough. I totally love it and thank you very much for bringing up all those points. You managed to bring up a whole lot of stuff, even at the end of day three, that nobody else had brought up. So that's pretty good going, actually. And thank you for those recommendations. Can we just add reforming the has-no-act to that list of recommendations? Because that would be Thank you.
Thank you, Muriel. I take your courtidol too, Muriel, because I think what's come out mostly for me is, you know, we have a contamination emergency. And I, I really appreciate that. And the other thing was exaggerating consequences. And so you came up with some really interesting and really powerful points there. And I, so I just wanted to meet you for, for the, your, thank you so much.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't have any questions and, and I, I haven't thought why, but maybe it's like Muriel, maybe I'm just tired. Or, but so much has been covered, you know, we, we have done, I wouldn't say a thorough job, but we've done a wide-ranging job. So now, really hopeful points to add in. It's another illustration of our current laws aren't, you know, if you want to channel Sir Jeffrey Palmer, our laws are not fit for purpose. In this area, we're just behind the times and you have got some good examples. And particularly in relation to your comments about the chemical poisoning of workers and, you know, your family. That kind of stuff, we, we don't deal with it because we're still stuck in that old mindset of prove it. Of the cause, you know, or it is a, I mean, it's a very old fashioned tried and true system in the courts that is, you know, been around for hundreds of years, right? It's a system we've developed and it's very hard to overturn. You know, what your standards of proof are, but now that we have more science that shows, you know, the more science we have, the less we know. It makes it very hard. And so the, yeah, the courts are going to have to grapple to deal with, are going to have to grapple with this as well as, but, I mean, parliamentarians and, and regulators have to figure out how to handle all these things. So yeah, thanks, you brought a lot of things together, really interesting.
Thank you. Just one more comment for you, Stephanie, it was about, I've been involved with the YT62, the Flore Fauna and Kotula and Slechupapiti claims that was led by mum. And if anything, it's, it's more important that we that the YT62 is addressed because it looks at all that Tonga species and who has the right to who is the true kaiteaki of those Tonga species where, where government has assumed ownership. It's all that kind of thing and, and of course, they haven't done a very good job. And they're not likely to, to do a good job in the future. And from the, the courtidol today especially, again, it's come back to that it has to be localised. You know, hapori communities involved in all the decisions that are made around that. So Stephanie, it was awesome, your, your testimony, thank you.
Kiora.
Thank you very much, Steph, for that and valuable contribution to the overview, just drawing together the, the pieces of the jigsaw or starting to. So now, in, in sort of drawing our, our three days to an end, I just want to take some, some summing up and closing remarks from each of us in the committee and, and also some closing remarks from each of the commissioners. Just a brief few words will probably be enough at this stage. Asher, I know that you, you wanted to, to add some recommendations that you didn't get a chance to add, if you want to do that now and start us off. Can't hear you. Too eager.
Okay, let's try that again. First, I'd just like to thank you, Stephanie, for a brilliant presentation and bringing, touching on a lot of things that, some, some things in particular that are really important that hadn't been mentioned, so. And just a big thank you to everybody who's been involved, all of the speakers, all of the attendees, you know, huge thanks to the committee and to the commissioners. I am, I did, I did have a long list of recommendations and I probably will send them through. But the one that really stands out for me is that there's no way that our government doesn't know about this. And all of these organisations, the EPA, the Ministry of Health, the Ministry for the Environment, DOC, MPI, DHBs, the Minister of Agriculture, it just goes on and on and on and on. And, and it points very clearly to what the problem is, is that they're heavily invested in poisons. And I think that it's time that perhaps we form a case against them, an international case of ecocide launched against the New Zealand Crown. Because it's completely unacceptable and it's the destruction of the whaka papa in the future of our country. So I'm just grateful and, and that is my recommendation to the commissioners, that ecocide is looked at in terms of what is actually, what has happened in this country and what is still continuing to happen. So I look forward to next steps and, yeah, yeah, and hearing, hearing, hearing what you all have to share for the rest of the day and regrouping and getting our heads around a lot of what we've heard.
Do you want to go next and just say some closing comments?
Me?
Hera?
Hera.
Can she hear me?
I'll wait until the end and then lead into the karakia.
Ah, okay, yeah. Hannah, did you want to say something in the closing remarks?
Yeah, really, the, it's, it has been overpowering. And I never had a chance really to bring the silent, the people who have not been able to speak with this inquiry. But I will just bring to you what happened when I asked one of the people who was unable to participate. And she has basically been rendered housebound, sick and incapacitated. Basically, ninety percent of her time for the last thirty years, and this is from exposure to roadside chemicals. And I asked her, why, why did she come back time after time to try and get change? Why did she put in submissions on plans, et cetera? And her answer was that basically, it was her belief that all her suffering was for a purpose. And why she wasn't able to just give up and turn up her toes was the children. And she said, you know, we should not be continuing to poison their environment, their families and their future. They are our most precious. And part of what I've done and part of what you see here is, is our campaign to protect our children from toxic pesticides. And one of the quotes that struck me that is so pertinent to our inquiry was from Baskett-Tonkak, and I hope I spelt his name right, who was the UN Special Rapporteur on Toxics. And in 2016, he said, states have an obligation to prevent children from being exposed to toxics and pollution. Case after case has illustrated the myriad of rights violated when states and businesses fail to prevent the exposure of children to toxics and pollutions. And he did go on to say that human rights are indivisible, interlinked and independent. A child's right to health is closely linked to a child's right to life, survival and development and numerous other rights. So that's what I would commend to the inquiry, is that this is important. Thank you.
Did you have any closing comments to make?
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess it's another vote of thanks to our commissioners for giving up these three days, it's a huge amount of information and emotion. It, to me, it really shows me that there's been a need for this. I'm really, really pleased there's been such a strong response from so many diverse people. Maori, Pakeha, rural, urban, academic, all sorts. And so, you know, again, we're going to take a pause, but the work is ongoing. And, and think it's been so amazing working with the committee. A really wonderful bunch of women, we've hung in here for two years. And it's, it's very pleasing that we've had these three days. So blessings upon everyone and may we move forward from here with renewed hope.
Absolutely, yes. So can we just briefly move to the commissioners? Muriel, did you want to just say anything in the closing remark?
I, I do, I do, I want to thank all of the presenters. I want to thank the committee for the incredible job you have done in bringing us together. And I want to thank all the people who have been listening in. I think this is actually a watershed moment. What's, what's been brought together is something that's never happened in New Zealand, Aotearoa, New Zealand before. The, the emphasis on human rights, on social licence, on the silencing of people, on the rights of indigenous people and the rights to the environment has been quite profound. And I have every confidence that we will bring together something that we can use both within Aotearoa, New Zealand and internationally to draw attention to what's been going on and to make it better. Now, I just have one last request, and I don't know, the commissioner, the secretary might shoot me down for this. Is there any way that the people who have been listening in to all of this, and they will have lots of stuff going through their minds? Can they make, not necessarily submissions, but send some comments or particularly recommendations? Can they, is there an opportunity for them to send through some recommendations through the people's inquiry? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
That's impossible.
Yep, yeah, we welcome all messages and, you know, although submissions closed, you know, we are still collecting submissions because this is ongoing. So, and that's so important and we want to hear from you all, we really do. So please do, do email us, contact us through our website, you know, get in touch. This is, this needs to be a collaborative effort, you know, everybody together.
I'll jump in there, here then, and, and just acknowledge the mana waihene and the, the fact that here we are, we're all a group of women and we're the ones that have been fighting for our environment, for our, our tamariki, mukapuna. And I just really want to acknowledge, you know, the women that have given their testimonies over the last three days. It's been such an inspiration and, you know, and inspiration of knowledge and understanding around poisons that connects that with the, with climate courtidol, with just connects everything back up again. And, and I, I'm so grateful to be, to have been part of this inquiry. And I'm very grateful for the present, presenters the last few days, especially my one particular was the, the board mills. It's only because I've got, actually, it's all a lot of people, but it's because I've got whaka papa there. But also with you, Asher, because I've got whaka papa up in Tai Tukarau too. So, you know, it's still kind of changed my mind about wanting to go back there in a hurry because of that. But just with the apple moth spray, I, I'd come up here for one day to, actually, I was coming through from north and I was one day in Mangere and then the next day I couldn't breathe. And I had to be put on, on oxygen after just one day in Auckland. I lived in Wellington for many years, so that's why I was so, so grateful to be a part of this conversation, being, thank you so much for inviting me, I'm here to be a commissioner too. So norae te nā kato, te nā tata kato.
Thanks for that kiora tato, thanks for those comments from everybody so far. I like echo both of them, you know, I, as the academic who, I read far too much and get absorbed and takes up too much time. I wouldn't have organised something like this, it wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had this wonderful group of organisers. I've said that to them and I thought, well, I should say that publicly. It's, yeah, it's, you wouldn't, you need everybody, you need the village, right? Everybody with their, with their skills and you need that drive to get something done. I was also, I had wondered, definitely visible today with Tom being ill, that how many women I was also, I had wondered, definitely visible today with Tom being ill, that how many women are running the show here, doing that admin? But, and, I mean, of course, in any area where it's like health, you know, or environment, women of course are not taken, historically. And still the case, but it's, this is not just sudden, women have typically not been taken seriously, not being believed. I mean, you think of all the history that everything comes from hysteria. Right? All of the diseases that might afflict a woman, it's all our own fault. And it's been really pleasing to see that we've got, it's not, you know, we, we've got men, we've got. People who have, who've got highly qualified, you know, on both men and women, you know, tertiary educated doctors, vets and other, other disciplines. Who are also validating this and doing the research. So it is not just as has been labeled the eco terrorist fringe, right? And when that label has been gone, as you've seen, it's often been what you call a deliberate subterfuge of fraud to make it look like an eco terrorist fringe. So it's been really helpful. I, I think the whole thing's been really helpful and I certainly hope. That as Mariel has all that confidence, we can come up with something useful, goodness gracious me. That's going to be a mission, but yeah, that is the idea, is to come up where you give a voice to. People that haven't always been heard and, but also it's not just people, it's ideas. Right? It's, as long, you know, we're going to get ideas with backing to show it's, they're not just a radical fringe. And hopefully come up with something useful that's a little bit like, you know, speaking truth to power, I think it's that old idea, right? So, yeah, kia rata and thank you very much.
Thank you Catherine, and thank you everybody again. And I know that we've got the possibility of Tom just joining us apparently, so I don't know if he's able to, to log in and. And join us for this final couple of minutes. Maybe we can, we can get him online.
It's like the middle of the night for him, isn't it?
It's getting late, Hannah?
Yeah, could I, yes, I, he, he emailed me a short while ago and he'd only just got back. So that's basically ten thirty in the evening on his side of the Atlantic. And he is okay, the problem with his eye will probably have to involve surgery. But he, he, he really just wanted to say that. You know, he said, I felt just awful about missing all the testimonies and interactions today. I bet it was another big day with fascinating testimony. And he is so right and we so missed him. And it's been fantastic to have him joining in, he's such a dedicated man, so.
Yeah, good, thank you for that. Okay, so before we, we move to the close and the karakia, I have a few words to say of special thanks to our commissioners. And if I can share my screen in a second, I'll, I'll show you what to, because you won't be able to see this. So as a special thank you to the commissioners, I'd like to present this koha now. And we would love to have been able to do this for you, I don't know if you can see that. And we'd love to have been able to do this for you. Kanahi kita kanahi, have I pronounced that correctly, I hope, face to face, we would love to have done it, but obviously. The COVID thing has stopped that, so it's a special koha specially made for the commissioners. And these pieces are created and funded by supporters of the People's Inquiry. In particular, Hamish in South Island, who's connected to one of our supporters, has designed and carved each of these by hand. And with the aroha and in the tokki design, ads, ads which is like a global symbol of an axe. To chop away all of the challenges, right? All the problems. And so it's symbolically representing our united strength. And so I'm going to show you a quick picture of Hamish. So you know what he looks like. There's Hamish. And he's down in South Island. And that's the, the picture of his workshop. Which is quite something where these were made. And so the pūnamu, I'll be sending to each of you personally. And this is what it looks like, all four together. And the tokki or ads is a global symbol of strength, as you know, determination and courage in times of adversity. And there's no doubt that one of the things that we've established over the last three days is we're in a time of adversity right now. And we, as the team of the People's Inquiry Committee, have worked for nearly two years together creating this hearing. We committed many, many hours of unpaid mahi and overcame many challenges included, including the COVID along the way. We have no other motive at all other than to support and give voice to those who have until now not been heard. The hearing hasn't been perfect, there are lots of things that we would change if we'd had more funds and if we'd had the opportunities that others benefit from. But we are proud of what we've managed to achieve together with the help of all of our supporters throughout New Zealand. We are also very proud that you agreed to be our commissioners and this crucial event simply couldn't have happened without you, but our work will never end. Because of our roles, we recognize the commitment you, your commissioner roles takes and the personal sacrifices that it means. Your time and commitment to our shared objectives is invaluable. We are all the conduit of all those who for many reasons have been unfairly silenced, sometimes for decades. These outcomes are now and will continue to be transforming for all of us in different ways, ways that are unknown to us at this present time. But the future is very positive. Hopefully, because of what we've achieved together and the future opportunities that this transformation. Provides for us, we find this very exciting and we remain positive about our future of our sacred Aotearoa. The shape of this, of this pūnamu represents a tool often used by Maori for carving, shaping and also maybe appropriately weaponry. And was originally used for very practical purposes, so we hope that this pūnamu will be accepted as a symbolic tool that you can use each. In, in two ways. Firstly, to help with the courage that is needed to overcome any challenges, so you can reach your objectives in writing the People's Inquiry Report. This report will undoubtedly be an historically significant document for our country, Aotearoa, New Zealand. Secondly, to provide help with the practical steps in reaching that shared objective. By giving voice to those diverse testimonies that you've read, watched, listened to and engaged with, all of which are spoken from the heart. Again, with no other motive other than to raise awareness of the harms that these poisons and pesticides are inflicting on our environment, wildlife and human health. And to prevent future harm. So finally, Hamish has used the rare and beautiful translucent enanga, white baked green stone, which is known to change colour over time. As the stone reacts to the air and oxidizes, this again could be said to be symbolic, I love my symbolism, of the changes over time. That you, our commissioners, experienced from the time of accepting this role and its responsibilities, through to the experience of listening to the testimonies and exposing them to the air. And then to the next stage of hopefully writing the report of your findings together. We all commit to helping you in whatever ways that we can in reaching those objectives in the coming months and maybe years. Kia kaha.
And I'd just very quickly say that is such a beautiful gift and I feel deeply, deeply honored by it, thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Same here, I wasn't sure, I thought, oh, I better not say anything now, this is the committee's turn, but yes.
Me too, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody and, and I think most of you are on our network list, so we'll be communicating via email and letting you know about any progress and if we are organizing any more meetings. There's, there's obviously so much, you know, this is just, we just scratched the surface and there's so much more to learn and to talk about. So I'm sure we will be organizing more discussions, yeah. So make sure you're, make sure you're registered through our website and, and we'll stay in touch that way.
Thank you, Isula, for saying on our behalf all that you said, it was perfect. Yes, we're all here to support the commissioners in the future. Thank you.
Shall I hand over to you to, to do the closing karakia for us, please?
I'm just acknowledging in my closing before I begin the karakia. Acknowledging all the speakers, I felt the way do I like my, my, my colleagues. Firstly, I want to acknowledge these wahine to each and every one of them. Asha? Isla? Stephanie and Hannah? We know what we've been through, that we've been through together. Kinga kōmihana to the commissioners, each and every one of you, thank you very much for accepting. The role that you have, which is a very, very important role. You're carrying the mama, you're carrying. The court or you're carrying the mama of everybody who's shared with you. The, the suffering that they've, they've had to experience over the years, that silent suffering of being poisoned. Tēnei taku mihi aroha kia kato katoa. And I also want to acknowledge each and every, each and every speaker. Can they, I'm so humbled, very humbled. To hear the court at all, and that was the, the co-papa. Of our committee, of our committee, when we met back in, in November two eighteen, was we needed to hear. The people, we need to hear the suffering of the people, we need to hear the truth as part of the healing, justice and healing going forward. So as I close, the first one I acknowledge is iomatuakore, our creator. Without our creator, we wouldn't exist. Iomatuakore is my heart and soul and only one I listen to and I follow and guides me in everything that I do. So tēnei taku mihi aroha kia kato kato, e iha karo mai, e mataki takimai i tēnei wa nangi tēnei ra, tēnei taku mihi aroha kia kato katoa. Ka inoi tata, I'm going to begin in Maori and then I will go through and explain the karakia, the translation of what the karakia is. E iomatuakore, our parent, our creator, we pray for the health and wellbeing of all the people. All the animals, all the insects, all the birds, all the forests, all the waters, all the medicines. Protect our mother Papa Tuana, mother earth, protect ranginua cosmos, the stars, the wind, a tāferi matia. Protect tangaroa, ocean, seas, guide and protect us all, your children. Ho me, hui e, taie.
Thank you, Hira. All right, everybody, it's time to sign off. Shall we leave it there? Yeah, thank you, everybody, thank you for, for, for watching, thank you, Hira, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Hira. Thank you, everyone.